All right, we are live. It is 5:30. And I do believe I've heard in the voices of a quorum. And so we are going to get started with our board meeting. We want to welcome you again to our board meeting. And at this time, we're going to call our meeting to order. And we have another wonderful elementary school that's going to be giving us the pledge Dominguez Elementary. Yay. Love the kids. Love the kids.
Good morning, Petri. Please stand up for the pledge allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic before which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Send our thanks. Hopefully they were watching and they know that they are superstars for tonight. Moving now to 1.3 approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Are there any items, Dr. Volkmer, you didn't say, so I'm going to assume there are none to be pulled?
None to pull this evening, President Rogers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will take the vote. Ms. Abios. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Ms. Vasalas Medina.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Motion carry. Thank you. All right, we are now at 1.4. Inspirational message will be none other than our own Dr. Barbara Flores.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. It is my honor to give our inspiration tonight. I don't know if you all recall, but when we were in a recession, the the item came up for our adult school. And the board vehemently said, no, we are not going to, I don't know if you remember this, Dr. Volkmer, but we said, no way, we're not going to get rid of our adult school. It's a very important entity in our, in our community. And many, many of our citizens have gone through it. They got their LVN, their welding certificates, their ESL, their English, and their citizenship. And very, very few people know that we provide those citizenship services, which are really, really crucial and important. So tonight, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for giving me this story. It's about Mr. Yastapana, Yastapana. And he, he went to our, our, our adult school for his citizenship. And his story is about freedom. And that's what we exhibit, and that's what we profess in our country. The rights and freedom to live, you know, the way in peace. And also to achieve our, to move towards achieving our goals. We're still working on it for many of our citizens that are, are part of African-American citizens, our Latino citizens, all our immigrant citizens. But I would like to honor Mr. Yastapana, Mohammed Yastapana, as the epitome of what we do for our community in terms of citizenship. And to share his story. Mohammed was born and raised in Iran. He first came to the United States 25 years ago, putting together his hard-earned financial resources and possible connections. He ventured to California and studied civil engineering at Cal State Fullerton. Cultural immersion and the challenges he encountered in launching his career impeded him to, to stay, so he reluctantly returned to his country. He practiced his career there and ably worked in some prestigious engineering firms accomplishing outstanding community projects. He was immensely grateful for the remarkable education he earned from the United States. Yet all these years inside his heart was the continuous learning for freedom. An attribute he had seen and felt while he was here and lived and enjoyed by the American people. For him, freedom is a precious gift. With it emanates chances to be able to explore all possibilities. The fruits of your efforts are seen and you taste the sweetness of life. He came back to the United States in 2013, enrolled in our citizenship program at our adult school. Becoming a citizen is a beautiful contribution, a continuation of his life, he quips. Even at almost the sunset of my life, I have all the opportunities to contribute profitably to my new country, the United States. It's payback time. I'm staring here for good, useful, and free. Is there, is there anything greater than catching the elusive dream and savoring freedom? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And Dr. Flores, I am assuming this is his picture, correct?
Yes, that's, I'm sorry, that's his picture, yes.
Okay, great.
But he is just one example of, of what we provide, services that we provide for our community. And it's really, and there's his certificate, his engineering certificate. And I mean, the last sentence, is there anything greater than catching the elusive dream of savoring freedom? We have to be reminded of that because it's a given. We, we take it for granted. And so I, I salute him and all our, all our citizens and all our immigrant families that have gotten their citizenship through our adult school. We should be very proud of ourselves for providing this service. Thank you.
For sharing that. I know we are one of a few with the adult is, so we are grateful to have it here in our, in our city. So thank you for that. We are now moving to 2.0 public hearing. We will now hold a public hearing on agenda item 2.1, Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding of School Reopening and Continued School Closures Related to Coronavirus 19, COVID-19, COVID-19 between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the San Bernardino Teachers Association. The public hearing is now open. And are there any comments, Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, Madam President, we have two. The first one I will call is Kyle Ortiz. If you're available, can you please unmute? Do we see him? Let's see. Says he's not here yet. So let's go ahead. I'll move on to our next one. And that is from Ashley Vita Salcala. Ashley, if you can unmute.
Good evening, President Rogers, members of the Board and Cabinet. I am Ashley Vita Salcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. On February 3rd, the district and SBTA came to agreement on the continuation of our current COVID MOU that continues to outline the impact of SB 98, distance learning, and its effect on our working conditions. The MOU is before you this evening for approval. We believe it's a fair and reasonable agreement, and our bargaining team spent many hours working on it in collaboration with the district in order to continue to support our members throughout the rest of this school year. Tonight, I urge you to vote to approve this agreement as we continue distance learning through the end of the year with no disruption to our members. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Cunningham, are there any other comments?
Not unless Mr. Ortiz is on yet. If not, that was it.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding School Reopening, Continued School Closure Related to Coronavirus 19, COVID-19 between the San Bernardino Teachers Association and the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved. And second, is there any discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. Ms. Abios.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Ms. Vasalas Medina. Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
When Rogers, I motion carry. Thank you. We are now moving to our special presentations. 3.1 Resolution Recognizing March as Arts Education Month. And Dr. Flores, would you read that resolution, please?
Let me find it, Madam. Just a moment. Uh, sorry. I should have known that you were going to ask me. But I love art, so I
I know, I know. And Ms. Vasalas Medina, get ready. I'll just give you a prompt.
Okay, great. Let me find it. Sorry. It won't take long. Ay, ay, ay. Um, there's so many items from, um, here it is. Okay, just, oh, there it is. Okay, thank you. Found it. Thank you. Whereas arts education, which includes dance, music, theater, and the visual arts, is a vital part of basic education, providing a balanced education for all students. And whereas instruction in the basic skills provides development and critical creative thinking skills and perpetual and perceptual abilities that extend to all careers and areas of life. And whereas the arts education policy of the California Board of Education states that each student should receive a high-quality, comprehensive arts education. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins California in declaring March as Arts Education Month and encourages all schools in the district to celebrate the arts with meaningful student activities and programs that demonstrate learning and understanding of the visual and performing arts. So moved. So moved.
Is that a move?
You can second it, Mr. Tillman.
It's been moved in second. If there's no, is there any discussion? And I just will add, we, we definitely love the arts. So I will go ahead and take a motion, or go ahead and take the vote. Ms. Abios.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt. Uh-oh, he might be on mute. Oh, you're not, Ashley.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Ms. Vasalas Medina.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
When Rogers, I motion carry. Thank you. 3.2 Resolution Recognizing March as National Women's History Month. Ms. Vasalas Medina, you ready?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I am. So whereas March is National Women's History Month, a time dedicated to recognizing and spreading awareness of the importance of women in the history of the United States, and whereas women have led efforts to secure suffrage and equal opportunity for women and served in the abolishment and abolish abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, labor movements, civil rights movements, and other causes to create a fair, a more fair and just society for all. And whereas suffragists marched and were arrested for supporting women's rights to vote and ultimately achieved the enactment of the 19th Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, which provides the right of citizens in the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. And extended the protection of the right to women, the right to vote to women of color and language minorities. And whereas President Ronald Reagan issued the first Women's History Month Presidential Proclamation in 1987. And whereas in our own community and across the US, women have been and continue to be leaders in the forefront of social change efforts, business, science, government, math, art, literature, music, film, athletics, and more. And now represent approximately half of the United States workforce with more than 10 million US businesses owned by women. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others around the state and nation in recognizing March as National Women's History Month and encourages district teachers to promote learning activities that encourage students to reflect on the many notable contributions that women have made to the United States. So moved.
Second. I know we get a resounding second on that. And if there's no discussion, again, I say that's what a great resolution, what a great history of women. And I'm just so proud of the work we have done over the years. So if there's no other discussion, I'll take the vote. Ms. Abios.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
All right.
Ms. Vasalas Medina.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
And Ms. Rogers, I motion carry. Thank you so much. All right, we have covered the first portion of our meeting. We are now going to adjourn into closed. Is there any comments before we adjourn, Ms. Cunningham?
No, there are none.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are now going to adjourn to our closed session, and we will be back as quickly as possible. So let's log out, board members, and log on.
Although our offices may be closed, many departments in the San Bernardino City Unified School District continue operating behind the scenes to provide services to our schools during these times of distance learning. Since March of 2020, when the coronavirus pandemic closed our schools, the San Bernardino City Unified School District Business Services Department rallied together to keep payroll, accounting, and purchasing services going to ensure our students and staff have the tools and resources to succeed in distance learning. Thank you to our hard-working business service staff for continuing to serve our students and teachers during these challenging times. This is another example that the San Bernardino City Unified School District continues to make hope happen for the San Bernardino community. And remember, we're all in this together.
All right, thank you all for your patience. We're trying to get back in to our regular board meetings, so thank you again. We're going to now move to 6.0. Board discussion, 6.1, school attendance, school, I'm sorry, athletics. School athletics, and I think we are queuing up from that, and I'm going to try to get Ms. Vasalas Medina.
And Madam President, we do have a comment.
Okay, all right, very good. And what do you, do you, okay, so you have a comment for 6.1?
Yeah, do you want to do it after the presentation or before?
No, we can, we can do them before.
Okay, let me just see if they're available. Hold on, please.
Great.
Okay, if Mr. Jeffrey Frisk is available, could you please unmute now and provide your comment? I'm not sure if I see him on or not. Karina says she doesn't think he's here, so I can always come back during public comment and call his name just in case he's there.
You're, you're on mute, President Rogers.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get Ms. Vasalas Medina in. Yes, were we able to get the comment in or no?
No, he doesn't seem to be available, so I can call him again during public comment.
Okay, nope. We tried that then, we can go ahead and
It's on my calendar. How, how do you do that?
Okay, you can go ahead and start the presentation.
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, per your request from our last board meeting, we've agendized an opportunity for you to get some information and have discussion around the return to athletics. Just to give you kind of a brief where we're at. As you know, we had actually started conditioning and in-person training several months ago, prior to the latest stay-at-home order being enacted. When that stay-at-home order did come into effect, we did pull back school personnel in a number of different areas, athletics being one of them, just to make sure everybody was staying safe. As the, as the numbers have come down and the stay-at-home order, the most recent stay-at-home order was lifted, we did put back in, as you know, home visits for vulnerable students. And then just, I think, starting today, actually, we made the decision last week to resume what we had been doing before. So the board had already given us guidance and direction around conditioning and individual training. When the numbers actually got below where they were when that original decision was made, we reenacted that. It started today. And so we're glad to have Sandra Rodriguez, who's going to share the latest guidance with us, with you in relation to competitions and how the tiered color system corresponds to the various sports. Want to thank Sandra for her leadership, as well as our ADs who have consistently been faithful advocates for our student athletes. She's joined tonight by athletic director from San Gregonio High School, longtime, very faithful employee, Matt Mada. So Sandra and Matt, take it away, please.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. We are very excited that we are coming back with our competitive athletics, with the starting of our athletic conditioning. And as Dr. Volkmer mentioned, we're returning back to a spot where we had entered back in November. And we're actually in a better situation as far as our COVID numbers. We're joined today by Matt Mada, one of our wonderful athletic directors. Our athletic directors have been a constant light for our students as they have advocated to return to athletics when it was safe to do so. And so I want to thank them for their leadership, their compassion, and their dedication to the students of our district. And we've, we've certainly made hope happen today. And so we're going to go on to the next slide. Thank you. So we're going to ask Mr. Mada to go over our fall athletics so that you have a better idea of what sports we will be conditioning for, as well as the tier in which CIF has deemed it's safe. Their decision to deem it safe to do so. Of course, every decision that is made is a board decision, and we respect that, and we follow those directives. But we do want to make sure that you're well-informed about the situation as it pertains to athletics. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. So to the board, we were just very happy today to return to athletics. As we talked about earlier, you saw the smile in the kids' eyes as they had their masks on, as we returned to the distancing and the conditioning and the workouts. So as you see here for the fall sports, you have the color breakdown, the purple for cross-country, the red for the sideline cheer, the orange for the volleyball, the water polo, and football. And then competitive cheers in the yellow. You'll notice at this time, cross-country as a purple sport could be allowed by the California Department of Public Health to compete. But as Dr. Rodriguez mentioned earlier, we're not yet competing. We're still going to continue to wait. Today was our first day of returning to practice after two months of being shut down. So it's going to take several weeks to get our kids back into condition anyways. And we'll continue to watch and monitor the COVID numbers, which, as mentioned previously, have dropped to be lower than the Thanksgiving numbers. So it was a very wise and well-timed shutdown that we just went through the last two months. Let's go on to the next slide. I see that Mr. Tillman has a question. If you want, we can talk about this question at the end of the slides. We only have one more slide after this. We, the spring sports that are coming up, you'll see that the first game really could be next week for tennis, but like, most sports are just going to, most spring sports are going to start next week. They weren't really quite ready to get going. From my school, softball is going to start tomorrow because they were ready to go as far as practicing is concerned. But the purple sports, you see, there were tennis, the swimming, the golf, the track. The red sports are baseball, softball. The orange sports are soccer and boys' volleyball. And then basketball and wrestling are in the yellow. And as I mentioned, you know, even though the purple sports could be starting in the next couple of weeks, we're going to continue to monitor the numbers along with the district and wait for guidance as to when we can actually potentially return to competition.
And we've made it very clear to all the athletic directors, who they have also made very clear with their coaches, that we are in a phase of conditioning only. And so as we, as we monitor the, the state of our COVID numbers, as we seek guidance from our board, then decisions will be made at a later time, but we just want to make sure that you are aware that we are entering conditioning only at this time. Next slide, please. And we asked that the board, as we're looking at, you know, our next steps as it comes to athletics, we're going to see today how our students in our next, one of our presentations today of, about our DNF rates with our high school students. And we know that COVID and the isolation has really taken a toll on our students and their academic performance. There is an assembly bill that has allowed boards to make adjustments in their board policies in regards to probationary periods. We ask that our next step of this is that we take a, a proposed policy to the policy subcommittee for the board to look at and for your consideration as we examine whether the board would like to move forward with allowing athletes and other extracurricular participants for a extended probationary period due to the extenuating circumstances with COVID. So again, we want to thank the board for your leadership. Safety is always a priority. We made it a priority with the staff, with all the athletic directors, as well as the coaches who are working with our students on a daily basis. We're excited that we were able to reopen, and we look forward to, as our numbers decrease, to develop a sense of normalcy. And we just really appreciate the opportunity to be able to bring back athletics to our students. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Tillman?
So in terms of the, the sports that were listed, are there any other districts in our league that we compete with? Are any of them moving past the training and actually competing?
Yes, actually, in cross-country, there are some local districts, Redlands, Yucaipa, some of Riverside, Cronin, Orco schools that have started. And we've had the opportunity to go out and observe their races to see what they're doing, the type of protocols they're following. It's not the typical, you know, large invitational, six teams going at one time. This past weekend, the Citrus Belt League, which is the one that Cajones in, they did time trials where one team ran out of time, and then that school moved out. In some of the other districts, they were running with only two teams. After those two teams raced, they moved them out, cleared them out completely, brought in two more teams, had them race, and cleared them out completely. So it, it's all watching social distancing as best as possible. And it's worked, worked pretty good. So we're just And it's worked pretty good. So we're just kind of waiting for our kids to get better trained and for our numbers to drop a little bit more to get the go-ahead from everybody.
And I guess my, so I guess I have a couple. First, I want to say from the outset, you know, our district has been very cautious. I think the numbers in our area have been great. I personally, if I had a child that was in school, I would sit out and wait. But I think that it's important to understand that we allow parents the freedom to make some choices. But in saying that, I have to say that, in terms of our employees and staff, that it has to be totally voluntary because the things are so fluid. When they talk about the different variants out there, different risks, no one has a strong handle on where things are at. I have a huge fear about the slowness in which vaccines are being rolled out to school staff. I really thought that when it first happened, that teachers and classified employees will be a priority. Well, it's obvious that that's not the case, and it's going to take a while for the vaccine to be offered to teachers and other district staff and personnel. So I'm real concerned about that. But if there are coaches and there's parents that want to volunteer, I think we should consider that. But I will say this, there's still going to be a lot of risk that the district is going to assume. You know, to me, a worst-case scenario, you could have a coach that is calling me and saying, "Hey, I want to coach the kids, and I'll volunteer to take the risk." And if something were to happen to that coach, and let's say the worst-case scenario, he got the virus and he passed away, even his family may come back and say, "We're going to sue you because of our family member working in your district." So there is no way to guarantee that the district is not going to incur liability by moving forward. But with that, I'm willing to assume some risk. If, like you said, for instance, in cross-country, if you think there's a way that folks could be out there and be safe, and there's other schools in our area and that sport competing, then I think we should have that discussion about allowing folks who want to volunteer. My biggest fear is this, though, is that as a district, if we ever talk about even something as confined as cross-country, that we're going to allow it in a volunteer state. My fear is that there's a site somewhere, or a campus, or a principal, or a district administrator that somehow puts the word out there that it is mandatory for staff to participate. And I am in no way saying that, because I think the risk is too great for, to put our staff that don't have to be in that predicament, in that predicament. But there's folks who want to volunteer, and I think we should have a discussion. Thank you.
Dr. Flor.
Hi, Matt. Thanks for coming. Can you clarify again what you're asking the board for?
I'll answer that, Matt. At this point in time, we were looking to inform the board as there were questions around athletics and when we were going to start it. We will be asking the board at a future time after we've gone through the policy subcommittee around changing board policy around probationary periods for athletics. That will be an action that we take later on after we've gone through the process with the subcommittee.
So the fact that Matt just shared that the kids came on campus and it was cross-country is that we approved that, right? We approved that already?
Yes, you've only, at this point in time, have approved conditioning for athletics. And so cross-country is the sport that is in season at this time as they're preparing for their season to start, but you've only approved conditioning.
Okay, and I appreciate, Matt, that you told us that you've taken every precaution necessary. And I share the same concerns that Mr. Tillman shares because we are a high purple. And then our, you know, our coaches, I know everybody's wanting to get back to something normal. And like you said, you saw the smiles in their eyes. And I just, and I know that you're taking all the precautions necessary. And so it is important that, you know, we begin slowly and take the precautions necessary. And then, like you said, Dr. Rodriguez, we'll take it to subcommittee and look at all the criteria and set up the, well, set up the criteria for when we begin again. And but I'm still concerned about all these mutant variations. They're supposed to be more deadly and faster. And I hope that, I hope that they start distributing and vaccinating our teachers and our staff as quickly as we get the vaccines in the area. And apparently Walgreens and CVS and other entities are going to be administering them. So, you know, I guess in the next two, three weeks, we'll know more. But I think, and then I also am waiting to hear about our students and how our students will get vaccinated as well. So it's just not the, and our children. So, but I thank you for coming, and Dr. Rodriguez, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And also, we got a letter from Mr. Johnson, and I wanted to thank him as well for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
No, thank you for bringing this. I, maybe when we had initially had that conversation where, you know, to bring back sports and that conditioning, I was, I was under the impression that it would be low-contact sports, you know, cross-country, sports that didn't really interact too closely and so forth. But I am glad, Mr. Maida, that you are taking those precautions for our students and looking at what other schools are doing to make sure that they're, we're creating a safe environment for them. A question of mine is for students that do not have healthcare or don't have health insurance, what are some options that you've seen to help them cover the physicals that is needed? Because we always want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for all students, and it should never hinder, finances or lack of healthcare should ever hinder and push them back from not participating in these sports as well.
Yes, some of our athletic trainers have looked into some of the local medical clinics. I know the Metropolitan Family Clinics on Highland and Sterling are doing physicals for kids right now that don't have their own doctor to go to. Some of the schools have been able to bring on some of the doctors from Western University and have them do physicals on campus outdoors at a cheaper price, too. So there's been that case. In most cases, if a kid is having trouble getting a physical, they contact the school, you know, either through the coach or the athletic department, and we do our very best to work with them and help them out.
Okay. And then I think there's, maybe you might have seen a program or another school site or another, you know, sports program which helps close that gap. And I think you've mentioned it briefly. Is that something that you've seen at other sites?
Yeah, we as A.D.s actually meet every week, and so we talk about it all the time. And sometimes some of our kids will go to another kid's, another school if they're doing some sort of physical, if they let us know.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Tillman?
I think Ms. Abiles was up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I looked down too quick. Ms. Abiles?
Mr. Tillman, yes, thank you, President Rogers. I had two comments, I guess. The first one was actually a public comment that was sent to all of us in regards to Arroyo Valley, and I just want to, you know, mention that here. There's, I guess, apparently vaccinations happening currently at that campus. And, you know, we just want to make sure that there's extra security, you know, there for any wandering adults now that the kids are going to be coming back to, you know, practice on campus. So just kind of be mindful of that. And then the second part of my question, it has less to do, less to do with athletics as it has to do with special education and assessments. And the reason why I'm bringing this up and it's relevant is because back when the board approved to be able to have sports come back on campus for training, I was wondering, you know, myself at the time, well, you know, what about the special education assessments, right? And so I know that for special education assessments, we are currently doing triennials from afar, and we're doing high disability, high disability assessments, too, right? So the ones that we're kind of, that we kind of have on hold a little bit more are the other health impairment or specific learning disability assessments where they're not as evident. And so I would, I would like for there to be some consideration, maybe in a future board meeting, where we, if we're going to be bringing back these athletes, maybe we can start also bringing back some of those school psychologists that want to do it, and it can even be done outdoors if that's part of the issue. But as far as my understanding, we don't have any waivers from, you know, legislators as to, as to, for us not to assess. So I really want to keep that in mind as that is still an obligation that we have to meet.
But I just want to respond, Ms. Abios, in regards to the Arroyo Valley facility situation. Dr. Funches and Chief Paulino have ensured that we have campus security officers at all of our high schools in which they are, where we have athletic conditioning. And so whenever we have something going on, we will have security officers, and Dr. Funches has been very diligent about that and working out the schedules so that we can make sure that people are there. I also want to make sure that everyone understands that we are sports conditioning, we're conditioning for all sports at this time. It's not just for cross-country, it's for all athletics as we're trying to get our students ready should their, their sport come into a time where they're able to compete. So at this point in time, all they're doing is conditioning and individual skill drills. But it's open for all athletics because fall and spring sports have kind of merged together. And so we don't have a lot of kids out there, but it's for all athletics at this time.
And then if I may, in response to your question, Ms. Abios, or your recommendation around the assessments, tonight the board will take action to approve the MOU with SBTA and the district. And in that, there's specific language, we have been working with our bargaining unit to have language around in-person assessments. The language does say that it is on a voluntary basis for our school psychologists to offer in-person assessment. So we're happy that we'll be moving forward with that. And so Special Ed will be working with our schools to offer in-person assessments to those families who want it and those psychologists who also want to do that. And they're, they're also going to offer to families, which they had not been in the past, but we just don't want this to keep building up. Any family that wants to do a virtual assessment, they're going to start offering that as well for our students that potentially may be specific learning disabilities or other health impairments. So two different ways now that we'll be able to do these initials. The ideal, as you know, is in-person, but that's the ideal for the academic side. That's not necessarily the ideal, depending on someone's comfort level around the health and safety side. But again, because we have that language moving forward in agreement with our bargaining unit, we will be able to start offering that for the families that want to and for the psychologists that also are interested.
And just to clarify really quickly, do we have an estimated date for that?
We can start doing, well, the action, the board will take action tonight. So we can start doing the in-person as soon as they schedule those meetings with the families. The virtual, we are, there are some contracts going to board. I believe it's on the March 16th board meeting to be able to offer the psych analysis virtually. We need a platform for that. We've been doing it with speech. We're increasing our licenses. So we've got some psychs that are doing it, but we're going to be able to do a broader scale. And so that'll be on the March 16th board agenda at this point.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, and just on that topic, you know, it goes back to the same thing. I hope, Dr. Volkumer, we're clear on this, and the board needs to take action. We should. You know, once, once people are offered the vaccine and they have the ability to take it, then I feel a lot more comfortable asking staff to come back. But the fact that there's not enough vaccines for our educator should say to us that we're at a point we can't force people to come back. So I just want to make sure, even in the case of doing these assessments, that we don't have administrators send out email blasts to those professionals saying that as of this day, we're going to do assessment. And I have someone in a group that has the type of, what do they call them? For COVID-19, pre...
Preconditions.
I don't want someone to come back that has preconditions and a high risk forced to come back and do an assessment. I hope we're not saying that. I mean, I know, I know too many people who have, who have died from COVID, who are sick from COVID, and who are in the hospital with COVID. And being a certain age, having diabetes, having all the host of conditions is causing bad things. So I'm not going to be in a predicament where we say, "Well, we're going to force all these folks to come back." And I hope I'm not hearing that, that that's not part of it. It has to be, if we're going to do in-person assessments, that we make sure people who have these preconditions are able to opt out, and it's totally voluntary. That, that, that is what has to dictate who is going to be able to come in and do the assessment. So, and I just want to put it out there for everybody because that's the direction that this board has given. And if people hear something different, you know, call me, because I want to make sure that we don't take that risk. Now, on the subject of the athletics, the reason why I asked the question about the cross-country, because I know cross-country is outside, I see you can stay distant. But if there are other schools that are participating, then you do have an issue with time. So we don't have time to, if we're going to say we're going to allow our students to participate safely in cross-country, I don't think we have time to wait for a committee. You do committees when you got plenty of time. These are some extraordinary circumstances. So to Dr. Volkumer, how long does the, how long does the season last? And is there any discussion about, are there coaches that want to come back and coach across country? And then I'd like for the board to consider, if we want to give direction, that once we feel that it's safe, that he has the discretion to allow that to happen.
So, Mr. Tillman, in response to your question, what I'm hearing is safety first, volunteers, not mandates, particularly for people who are, have preconditions.
Exactly.
When we can do so safely, when you're, what I hear you saying is giving us direction that we can, when we can do, when we believe we can do so safely, then we, under those conditions, we can move forward with getting back to competition.
And I'm trying to get, and I'm looking for consensus from the board on how to do that. But yes, that's, that's one of the reasons why, after we got contact with Mr. Johnson, I wanted to agendize this so the board could give that direction.
I agree with you, Mr. Tillman.
Low-contact sport, though, honestly, it has, I like cross-country as an example, low-contact sport.
I agree.
We would still abide by the, as long as it's in place, we'll still abide by the tiered color systems. Mrs. Rosales Medina, you saw today those purple sports are the lowest contact sports, cross-country, swimming, tennis, where they're on opposite sides of a court, et cetera. We will still abide by that until such time as our, as our conditions change locally.
Thank you.
So it sounds like I'm hearing that. And just, just to be clear again, we were at this point some months ago, but then again, you know, things went out. And so we reset, we're resetting right back to exactly what we agreed upon. And I know it's been mentioned a couple of times, I'm going to say it again, so we're clear. We're not forcing anybody to do anything under these circumstances, especially... especially when there are people that may want to take the vaccine or may not want to take that. We're not there. So that, that message has to be clear. And then the second part of that, what you're moving for with Dr. Volkmer, what we're talking about now without, I guess, really kind of going into a vote, is that it's still under the safe to do so. You, everyone and, and, and Mr. Maida and all the team is clear on when, you know, as they align things up and say, okay, we can do this safely in this manner. It still falls kind of under the same umbrella of that. And, and I'm glad to hear that you all have went and you've kind of explored other ways. And I don't know, I know Mr. Tillman asked, I don't know what the seasonal timeframe is. Is it, how many more weeks is left or not left in it? I know that would be a factor. So, you know, we're still saying again, you know, when it's safe to do so, but you all are out there exploring. And I think the last time Dr. Volkmer just, just simply had to, you know, made up a call to say, okay, here's where we are. It went awry. We got to halt things, you know, and now we're back wanting to move forward. So we can do that. But be clear, we saw your charts. Board, we saw the charts and that's what we're, we're in agreement. Dr. Hill, this is the end of the presentation. So if you wanted to add something in now, you can do so.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Maida did a great job. I had to disappear a couple of times, so I apologize if I, 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 I will, if I asked something that was answered already, because I just hate to do that. But I, I didn't hear anything about the masks. So when they're out training, are they wearing their mask? Or is that a difficult thing for them to do?
Yes, the masks are being worn, you know, as directed by the CDPH, the California Department of Health. The masks be worn whenever possible, as tolerated is what it's kind of said. So even in cross-country, we've seen the kids, they'll start with the mask on. And then as they start to run more, they'll drop the mask down. When they're just standing around talking, their masks are up. The only other sport that you don't see the mask on is obviously when they're in the pool. They can't wear the mask when they're in the water. But in all the other sports, they're wearing their masks as much as possible unless there's any really high aerobic type activity where they, it'd be dangerous.
Okay, and that, that's, that's great. Now, have you gotten any negative feedback from other districts on, you know, what are some of their, what is one of the, some of the challenges they are having?
Well, you know, I think one of our biggest challenges, and we, we focus on it every day with our coaches, and we talk about it in our meetings with Dr. Rodriguez and Officer Veteer, is just making sure the kids socially distance as much as possible, like when they're coming and going. So like the beginning of practice, when they're being checked in or at the end of practice, when they're leaving to get picked up by their rides. We just have to be on them, you know, from the moment they step on campus to keep them socially distanced. And I think that's probably, believe it or not, one of the biggest challenges because when they're actually in the activity and in the practice environment, it's pretty easy to direct them and keep them apart. So that's probably the biggest challenge, I think, that, that we're facing. Other than, as Mr. Tillman brought up, the calendar crunch. And for Mr. Tillman, the cross-country season does end on March 27. So we, we are getting closer to the window where there's not going to be much left for competing for that sport because it's a fall sport. And so most of the fall sports end in March, except for football ends in middle April now, and, but it's an orange sport. And so it's a long ways away from really being considered for any sort of contact.
Thank you. And I want to commend you for your background. I know the other high schools are jealous, but the Spartan field looks awfully good. But for those of you who have not seen any of the football fields on all of our schools, our district has done a marvelous job having them look as wonderful as the one you see now. And I just want to say, I've always supported and will continue to support, to support we need to do for our staff, our students, our parents and everyone else. Whatever we can, as long as it's safe to do so. So thanks for your great presentation.
Well, if I could real quick to thank you to the board because literally the field that you do see behind me was a field that you guys paid for after we, we had it redone a couple of years ago. And yes, all the other schools do have fields just as beautiful as, as this. So thank you for catching us up to all of our surrounding districts because without your help four years ago, we couldn't have been, done any of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So Board, I, I see Dr. Flores and Mr. Tillman. We're going to try to wrap this up and I believe, because in our call, we do have our public comments are waiting and I'm not familiar, I'll check in with Ms. Cunningham. I see a name that I'm not familiar. So if Dr. Flores and then Mr. Tillman can wrap up their comments, so.
Mine will be real short. I just want to emphasize that what Mr. Tillman said about safety first and that being voluntary. And voluntary means voluntary. Doesn't mean that, you know, I hope that our principals and, and I know our athletic directors are very ethical and they will adhere to our coaches, you know, coming on voluntarily. And if they do have pre-conditions, they should not be on, on campus. That's just my word of caution in terms of the use of the word voluntary needs to mean voluntary. Okay? So, thank you.
Mr., Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, Madam President, because we are moving further than what we were before. Before we, because we were talking about conditioning before. So now we're moving forward, we're giving Dr. Volkmer the discretion if they realize the same point. For instance, I think cross-country is a perfect example. If they have a coach that volunteers and wants to do it, they have parents that agree that they want to volunteer, to the extent that I would even ask people to file, to sign a waiver. I know that legally they say the waiver doesn't have any weight. But I want to make sure that they know that the district is saying this is totally optional. I, I, my, my biggest fear is to have a, a parent or a student or a a staff member think they have to do this. So I think we should put something in place where they're signing a waiver that's saying that the board knows that you, you are volunteering to participate. Have them sign it just so I know that they were told that this was totally voluntary. And then, so the direction would be that if you had those people that want to volunteer, they could participate. Because, because we, we're weighing this, right? And in cross-country is a perfect example. You might have one of our students who is tops in the state. And even if they get in now, they might want to raise and, and a post of time that again, will full ride scholarship, that'd affect their entire rest of their lives. So I, I, we have a lot of sight of how important sports are. But it, it's just balancing it with safety. So if we can move forward safely, that's what I'm asking for those ones that have been deemed by the Public Health Department in the state, as safe to participate in. Thank you.
That is agreed. And I, I'm not sure, Mr. Tillman, on this. The last part, you did talk about the waiver. So Dr. Volkmer, you have to get back to us on how that can be put in place. Okay, thank you, Board. We're going to move on because we, I do know that we have some public comments and they are, they are in there with us waiting. Okay, 6.2 superintendent search. And thank you, Ms. Maida. Again, appreciate you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Sandra. Appreciate it. Thank you, Board, for the very clear direction. We can work with that and we'll work with that. So I think that'll be very positive for our student athletes. All right, if we can bring up the next PowerPoint, Board. One of the things that you also asked for at the last board meeting was to share with the public kind of a general overview of the superintendent search and selection process. And so I'm going to do that, just have a few slides to go over fairly quickly. The first phase, this is slide two, but the first phase of the, of the process was way back when, well, you'll remember, the community will remember, and I know you remember, Board, that we started this process back in January, thinking that it would conclude sometime in April or May. It was put on hold and we resumed it just fairly recently. And so want to go back to that because this is a critical piece in the, in the entire process. The board hosted several forums to gather input from the community. And what the board has said from the very beginning is that we want the community's fingerprints, the community's voice to be very prominent in, in this entire search process. And so these are the activities that we conducted back in January. We had an online survey that ran from January 13th through January 22nd, just asking the public in our community, what are the attributes? What are the characteristics you want to see in our new superintendent? And that was, they could, they could offer anything. We collected, you'll remember, we shared all of these with you. We collected every comment from every single person that responded. We had a community forum, kind of a town hall type meeting on January 22nd, that basically was designed to do the same thing. We conducted a similar activity with our management team on January 22nd as well. And then on January 24th, we sat with our superintendent student advisory, which as you know, is composed of students from all of our high schools. And they, they had an opportunity to give their input. And then finally, the, we had a board meeting on January 30th, which was specifically designed, and you'll remember, people coming down two sides of the aisle to give their input toward what we had gathered to that point and what the board had already kind of brainstormed as well. So there was a very large effort to gather the input from the community. So we'll move to the next slide. And basically, that information was embedded to all, into all of our recruitment materials and, and has served and will continue to serve as a guide throughout the process. So I recognize that you can't see this. It is on our website. If you, if anybody from the community wants to take a look at it. But this is basically kind of an amalgamation of all of the input that came from the community in terms of, here's what we're looking for. These are the attributes that we want to see in a new superintendent. These are the characteristics and experiences they should have and that should embody their professional experience. And I can share with you that having talked to most of the candidates that have applied for our superintendency, several commented, commented about how, commented about how helpful this particular document was, just in terms of their thinking and saying, you know, am I a good fit for this position? Is this something that, that I, am I going to be able to fulfill these responsibilities and these attributes and these characteristics? So that has served us well. And again, based on all of that, all of that input from the community. Next slide. So basically, to kind of bring us up to speed as to where we are now, in terms of recruitment, we use the most prominent recruitment source there is. It's called EdCal, which is linked to EdJoin, which anybody who's looking for a job, not only in California, but in some cases nationally, goes right to that source as their, kind of their clearinghouse for what positions are open and what positions would I like to apply for. Originally, after that community scan, we advertised in both print and electronic formats from February 24th through April 6th. And then again, the board put the, the process on hold. We resumed that recruitment on December 7th and it ran for another month and a half through January 22nd of the current year. And that was our recruitment effort. And again, all of it was based on that brochure in relation to attributes and characteristics. We received over 20 applications for a position. And so this kind of brings us to where we are now. If I could go to the next slide. So now we're, now we're starting in on the selection process. And so the paper screening, where we're reviewing the applications and really holding them up against those attributes and those characteristics and those desired experiences is nearly done. We'll, we'll be finishing that up very, very quickly within, you know, next couple of days. Interviews should be probably late February at this point, mid, mid to in-between late February. And then if all goes well and we're able to hold to our timelines, the board should be able to make a selection and appointment sometime in March, the 2nd or the 16th are our regularly scheduled board meetings. Board can also always have a special board meeting to make that appointment if that's how the timing works out. So that kind of takes you from back in January through the community scan, through the various steps of the search and gives you an update in terms of where we are right now and where we're headed in the next approximately month or so.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Dr. Flores?
Ah, yes, Dr. Volkmer, was that flyer, recruitment flyer in Spanish as well?
I, I don't-
So that our parents would know that it would, you know, that their, their questions were in there, or their characteristics were in there. I got a message, I got a message saying that they never saw it in Spanish, so.
Yeah, it's, it's something we use for the applicants. We can certainly translate it so that they know that their, their input was given toward that brochure. Absolutely. I don't think we did that as part of the recruitment process.
Right. But just so the parents know that their voice and questions were included would be really helpful. Also, I think last time you said that the parents or community could also send questions, since it's been a year, that we as a board could look at and maybe, you know, put them in categories. It may be some of the categories that we're asking, but there's, their questions may be more specific. And I didn't see that in your, in your timeline.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, for that reminder. We did do that just this past week at the board's request. And we have collected any input from the community and we will be happy to share that with the board.
Was there, was there a deadline for them to submit questions?
Ginger, I believe the, was the deadline Friday?
It's today, actually. We accepted them through today.
And were they in Spanish? Was the, the call in Spanish? For a parent to submit them in Spanish?
It was posted on social media and that would have been in Spanish. And then there was a form that was created in order for them to submit that. So I'll have to verify that the form was in Spanish, but I know the posts would have been translated.
Okay. Well, if it wasn't, I think we need to, since we have 79% of our, our population and the majority of the parents speak Spanish, I think it behooves us to fly it again. And if it wasn't in Spanish, that's my recommendation.
We'll double check for you.
I will look right now.
Thank you.
Okay, and the form was, Mr. Tisdale put in the notes that the form was. I see that there. Okay, Board, are there any other questions? Of course, thank you again, Dr. Volkmer, for revisiting. It seems like it's been forever, but the good thing about it is prior to the ugly of COVID, at least we, you know, we were in a place to really try to determine what we wanted to see as the attributes of the next superintendent with the community's input. And so, and I'm also glad that we were able to, you know, gather some more fresh information in these past recent weeks, which is also good as well. So that's, that's how important it is to hear from our community. I'm seeing that, yes, the form was in Spanish. That just came in from Ginger.
Which form, which form, Madam President?
Ginger, you want to come on?
Sure. The form for submitting questions for the board to consider in the interview process was both in English and Spanish.
And was it only on social media?
It was accessible from the superintendent's search page of the website. And then also on social, we were promoted the availability of that through social media.
I don't think that, I, I'm just, parents are texting me that they did not see it or were aware of it. So, I mean, and we only gave them, what, a week? That was it? I think, I don't think that's enough. I think we need to open it up so we do have that input, Dr. Volkmer and Madam President.
The, I mean, I'm not, I guess I'm not really clear on, again, we opened it up, we did make sure it was translated. We talked about that, what was it, two weeks, how, how, a couple of weeks ago, we had our, our last board, or a special board meeting, actually. And I know it came up as a public comment and that's when we immediately went to insert that.
When was it posted? I didn't even see it. And I'm on, I, I do check Instagram.
Dr. Flores, you'll remember, we had the special board meeting on the 4th.
Right.
When, where we talked about this. The, the 8th was a holiday, so we had it ready to go as soon as we came back from the holiday. So it was only, it was only a week. A little more than it was a, a calendar week, not just a- A little more than it was a calendar week, not just a Monday through Thursday. It started last Tuesday and we closed the window today.
I'm getting texts that parents didn't see it and they don't, didn't know that that's where it was going to be posted. So, and they have questions. So I, I recommend you open it up a little to see what, and see what question.
Well, if we, if, if we entertain more questions, we do know that we have a closed session, so we're, we're, we're within our timeline. What we did commit to, to the community, we've been transparent about that. And this was an extra definitely input to hear. We haven't even seen those things too, but that's available in those, those parents that did respond. So I have to, have to give some credence to somehow someone knew. But we definitely value the voices, but we can, we can talk more about this. But right now, we know that we have our due diligence to do this evening to kind of see where we are.
We can talk about it during our, our closed session.
Our closed session.
Okay, thank you.
So just for clarity, for those that are watching or texting perhaps, and I see you, Mr. Tillman, we, we will be going back in the closed session as well as we have this discussion for us as the board, your representatives. So we hear your concerns, but we do value the input and we do want to stay within what we agreed as our timeline. Mr. Tillman? You're on mute, sir.
Just so I'm clear about the quote unquote questions. Are the, are the questions that you're talking about, Dr. Flores, the questions that the community wants us to ask candidate?
Yes.
Well, there's plenty of time for that. We don't, we don't have any candidates here tonight. They text you the questions or if you want to, I mean, if the board wanted to open up for more questions, we're not doing interviews. So I mean, we can always.
That's all I'm asking, Mr. Tillman, that we provide them access, you know, and a voice for them because they didn't see the, they didn't know where to go look. They don't know where to look.
Right. So, and that won't impact us until we actually do interviews. So we'll wait a little while. So I don't think we want to ask them for the question. But they, they know, just the way they're texting you right now, they can send you questions.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So we will, we'll talk more on that. And I don't see any other comments. So again, thank you again for the update. All of this information that you did hear tonight too is still on and will remain on our website as well. All right, we are now moving to 7.1, public comments. And I'm not sure who to tee it over to, but I'm gonna, okay, let's go ahead and read. Before you begin, public comment is the time during the agenda when the board is prepared to receive comments from the public within their subject matter jurisdictions such as policies, regulations and procedures of the district comments on programs, services or operations of the districts or fiscal matters of the district. You may address your comments to specific items on the agenda. However, this is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda. Pursuant to the provision of governor's, of the governor's executive order in 2920 dated March 17, 2020, certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act are suspended. If you would like to make a live comment at district board meetings, a registration form is required. Forms can be found on the district's website and Facebook. This registration form is available for 24 hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and will close at 4:30 PM on the day of the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. All comments submitted on one subject will be provided no more than 30 minutes. A timer will be visible on the screen during your comments. We ask that you monitor your time. Participants are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration and they will immediately be removed from the meeting. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. All right, we are ready to receive our public comments.
Okay, Madam President, the first one I will call is Nicholas Dostasio. If you're available, can you please unmute now?
Good evening. So I represent DV as our union member, or union rep. I just wanted to bring up a couple of issues with your guys' vote next week on the Savant Charter. So in September, we were told by the district leadership and the board that there would be transparency and that there would be writing of wrongs. Yet from September through the rest of 2020, there were no updates given to DV staff's, staff members. There was no opportunity for us to be heard or even be informed about what was going on. We've asked numerous questions. What is Savant's enrollment? DV's is 672 rostered. We have 94% attendance during a pandemic. We have our stats. Why are the Savant stats missing? Why, why do we, why are we unable to know what is going to be cohabitating our site? We've also asked about Savant's COVID safety plan. We are deeply concerned about where our students will be at, how we will be able to socially distance in a school that now has half the number of classrooms as we once had. As I've come to understand it, she has been inhabiting the school at least part-time and we, and we still don't have any idea what her COVID safety plan is while we are expressly forbidden from coming on campus. Since our previous board, board meeting, the one on February 2nd, two board members asked that we be contacted. That would be Barbara Flores and Margaret Hill. Since they've, Margaret Hill even requested, and I quote, "that we make sure that we had everything we needed." No one has been contacted during those two weeks until today. It was sent out to us, a meeting. So two full weeks went by before anyone on my site was contacted about anything to be updated or to be asked any questions. My next point is Savant was given a $495,000 loan, a loan, excuse me, during the time of a pandemic where funds are already short. Given at a time when we thought funds were going to be even shorter than we now realize they are. This was supposed to be a loan, not a gift. Yet from what I've come to understand, the first payment has been waived and forgiven. That is by definition a gift. Are these same gifts being given out to all charter schools? Are they being given equally to all sites? These are questions that we, we have been left unanswered. Part of the cohabitation was an agreement to re, sorry, to renovate parts of DV's campus. Our school was open in 1959. There are many parts of it that have never been modernized. There are classrooms with four outlets in them. My previous classroom had no working drops for internet. We've asked for two steam labs, a walkway from the street to the school to prevent students from having to walk through a parking lot and parent driveway. We've asked for a new safe defense that would help keep homeless out of our school. I'm not sure if the board is aware of the homeless situation on our campus, but they've on multiple occasions gained access to our buildings themselves, including our cafeteria. And nothing has been done to secure our school. That, we did get the fence, but it's already been cut four times. This was the safety fence that we were insured by Tom Pace was uncuttable. We've also asked for a walkway for our PE students to get to the field to again, prevent students from having to walk through an inactive parking lot. None of these things have been done for our students' safety. And that's what we're focusing on is the safety of our students. This seems unfair when Savant has gotten a brand new playground built for them, brand new lunch tables, while the DV lunch tables are borderline falling apart and are being constantly repaired. And Savant is getting a covered lunch area, something that DV staff, parents, students have been asking for for years. But we still, we still do not have that. The students of Savant are not part of SBCUSD. And SBCUSD does not get ADA for any of those students. This was, or many of those students, excuse me. Savant parents clarified this themselves two weeks ago. Many of them mentioned that they do, they drive outside of our district to attend this school. And that is all I have for you tonight. Please reconsider holding off on the reopening Savant's charter until we've resumed in-person lessons. We are not out to get their charter revoked or in any way, shape or form. We are just looking for the equality of our students, our parents and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Todd Montemeyer. If you're available, could you please unmute?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, board members, and to all who are watching this evening. Good evening to you as well. My name is Todd Montemeyer and I am the music director for the Del Vallejo Leadership and Steam Academy for the past three years. Before working at DV, I taught elementary schools in the same neighborhood, Hunt, Barton, Emerton, and the 4th and 5th grades at Rodriguez. Three years ago, I voluntarily transferred to DV in order to provide the students there the opportunity to continue their music education in a manner that befits their grit, resilience and potential. Due to the pandemic, our musical growth may have been halted, but I can say without a doubt that our program, as well as the faculty and staff at large, continue to buck the unkind reputation that have been unfairly smeared upon us. We continue to provide the high quality, forward-thinking, innovative and structured learning that our challenging student body needs and deserves. And to think that some of our resources are gradually being stripped away is heartbreaking because we, the staff of DV, are in the trenches constantly trying to find new ways to engage our students to be the best they can possibly be before they head off into high school. I cannot speak highly enough about my colleagues and our administration and their impact in the community. I would like to, again, in the, the name of equity, compare and contrast some information regarding Savant Prep and bring to light some information that has come to us from primary sources in relation to different charter schools in the district, namely, the Public Safety Academy. The district does not give direct funding to all sites or specifically the PSA. Their funding comes from the state. How does Savant receive approximately half a million dollars of district funding? PSA serves over 50% community students in San Bernardino. Why has not Savant provided their geographical makeup of their students? PSA serves grades six through 12, all under one name and one school. Why does Savant get to continually receive DV's facilities with their growth? And would DV students be moved into portables should we also experience growth as well? As reported by a district employee to our previous union representative. PSA has to outsource their own food for their lunches to their students as they don't have a cafeteria. Why does Savant prepare to use the Del Vallejo facilities? And why do DV students continue to sit on stained splintering benches and tables? PSA must provide their own security. Will Savant? Will DV security also serve their campus as well? PSA requires WASC accreditation as part of their charter. Does Savant? A search on the WASC website returns zero results when using their school name. PSA must show growth in test scores or the board may possibly pull their charter. What does Savant get held accountable to? Why haven't they provided at least two years of data from state-approved testing to show their growth? In the name of equity, we seek transparency so that the thought of favoritism is put to ease and removed from our minds. We are not seeking cancellation of Savant's charter. We applaud the leaps and bounds they are making with their students. But again, we seek equity. We are seeking postponement so we can be given the time to deliberate, which was never afforded us at the start of the process. There are around 25 charter schools in San Bernardino and Savant would be the only one co-locating on an active district school site. And approximately half of these schools are within a half-mile radius of DV's campus that currently serve TK through 12th grade. We are seeking a better location for Savant so that we both may flourish. In an orchestra, you don't put a piccolo in the cello section. The same way you don't put an elementary school on an active independent middle school. Del Vallejo, we are a unique campus. We are a unique collection. We are a medley of the very best our district has to offer. And the ongoing dissonance of this co-location is causing us to lose harmony. Our symphony is fracturing and we need our district, our board, our conductors to show us that one musician, one team player in our ensemble is not more important than another. We need to see that everyone's contributions are valued equally. When I see a student struggling in the back of the second violin section, do I take away their instrument? No. I roll up my sleeves, get off the podium, sit with the student, grab an instrument and play right next to them to uplift, encourage and bolster. In the name of equity, we implore you to postpone their charter and reconsider the co-location on the campus of DV. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Anani Nash Bay. If you're available, can you please unmute now?
Hello, good morning, or sorry, good afternoon. Hello. Good afternoon. So, good evening, board. Thank you for this time to speak this evening. My name is Anani Nash Bay. I'm a teacher at DV Leadership Steam Academy. I decided to speak on behalf of some of the students and the teachers here at DV. I've been at DV for three, going on four years. And I specifically chose to go to DV. I chose DV because I wanted to, I chose DV because I wanted to help teach the students from that neighborhood. DV has one of the highest African-American students population in San Bernardino City Unified School District. I want it to be an asset to that population. So I'm here to ask the school board to put Savant's charter on hold until after return to school in person. And just like what Mr. Montemeyer just said, if not, we don't want to take away their charter. We just ask that the vote be postponed until we all come back on campus. We're asking it to be postponed until we come back, until we come back on campus so we know what classrooms we need to service our own students to socially distance at. So we do know that when we come back, that it's going to be new protocols, different things that has to do with COVID. And when Savant was awarded their classrooms, that was pre-COVID. So now that we are in this and we probably will be in COVID a whole, you know, for a couple more years, what are our students going to do as far as space, time and being able to be socially distanced? So Savant has already occupied 11 of our classrooms plus the speech education building with the ability to consume more classes each year that they grow. I just want to know where's the equity in that for our students? When the classroom were first taken, it was said we weren't using those classrooms, which was not true either because one of those classrooms that was taken away was my classroom. We are just asking that Savant be able to show on dashboards her test scores and her actual enrollment count as well. We have 672 rostered students with more students to come next year. If we are giving away more classrooms each year, where, where would our students be? Is it equitable that our students will be put in portables or bus to other schools? I think it's, I think that Savant is a great stu, a great school. I have friends that have children that go there. So it's not that we don't want the school to thrive. We want them to thrive, but at the same time, do we want them to thrive at the cost of our students? We're just asking, we're just asking, I'm sorry, got lost right here. So like, like there were parents that came on last week from Savant that said that they were willing to drive from all over other school districts to bring their kids to Savant wherever they, wherever they are. So with that being said, we know that those students are going to thrive wherever they are because they have very supportive parents that are willing to drive past Beaumont, past Rialto, past the other schools that they said they pass in order to get to our campus. We don't have that same thing for our students. We have students that are right there in that neighborhood that are walking to school, that are coming to school, that if they have to get on a bus to go to another school, that they may not even make it. They have parents that, that they all gave raving reviews of having very good parental support. We can't mandate our, our parents to, to volunteer. We are a public school, so we, we don't have the option to have parents at the school to volunteer as, as, as Savant does. So, it's not really, got lost here. Excuse me. Just kind of, kind of go through here because he already said something, so I didn't want to repeat the, I didn't want to repeat the exact same things. So in short, because Mr. Montemeyer said it so eloquently, we just, we just want the charter to be put on hold until we're all on campus so we can assess again how much room. assess again how much room that we need at DV before we're able to give away classrooms and resources and other things to another school at the, at the expense of our children. And that's all we're asking. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and thank you for this platform for letting us be able to give our voice.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Fatima Cristerna Adame. If you're available, can you please unmute?
Hi, good evening, Board, and thank you for having me. I apologize for not coming during the public hearing, but unfortunately I had a death in the family. And I wanted to take the time to ensure that you all know that California Charter Schools Association is recommending the renewal for Savant Preparatory Academy as they were approved by you two years ago. Savant Prep is a member in good standing of our association and, in our opinion, meets the legal standards for renewal under the California Education Code 47607. The California Charter Schools Association is a membership and professional organization serving, serving the vast majority of, of the over 1,300 public charter schools in the state of California. Our mission is to increase student achievement by strengthening and expanding access to high-quality, public charter school education. CCSA has worked with the leadership at Savant Prep over the last two years of operation and a year before that, when the team was gathering the school together. And we know that they are providing programs for students throughout the San Bernardino community that families want. And approval of the renewal will, would allow the school to ensure that continued and expanded services are available to students under their care. Savant Prep will produce scholars who are financially literate, passionate about their purpose and positioned to become entrepreneurial leaders in their community. CCSA supports the school and respects, respectfully urges you to renew their petition. And I just wanted to take a minute or two, um, to explain to the community at large, um, you know, we definitely want equity for all students, which is why we exist as public charter schools. But there are legal reasons why this board can and should renew this school in a timely manner. Prop 39 responsibilities as well that allow a charter school to petition a school district for facilities. However, there's also fiscal responsibility from the charter school to the district. Charter school, all charter schools pay an oversight fee to the district or the county that authorizes them of up to 1% of AD, of their total ADA. In the case of Savant Prep, they now have to pay San Bernardino City Unified 3% oversight because the other 2% is what they have to pay for the facilities that they use. So there is no free ride. There is no, um, favoritism. This is a legal standing that the law allows a charter school to petition for a Prop 39 facility through the school district. Other charter schools have chosen a different route because that's what met the needs of their students and community, which is typically an off-site location that has the legal requirements for them to host and have students occupy those buildings. In the case of Savant Prep and their families, um, they prop 39 the district, uh, but it was the district's responsibility to provide a facility for them to use. So it was not a choice of Savant Prep, but rather a negotiation with the school district. And again, the school has fiscal responsibility to pay a 3% oversight fee. And I want to thank you because over the course of the 15 years that I have worked here in San Bernardino City Unified with this board, um, the one thing that I'm always proud to say as a resident of San Bernardino is that San Bernardino City Unified School District had all, has always placed all kids first. And that means something to someone who continues to choose to live here in San Bernardino. And the reason I choose to live here is because of the amazing leadership that we do have that always values the education of all students. So with that said, I implore you to renew in a timely fashion the petition for Savant Preparatory Academy. Now, should you need to find me, I've included my contact information. Should you have any more questions about CCSA's support or Savant Preparatory Academy that I could facilitate? Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Marin. If you're available, could you? Okay, I don't know if she's available. I'll go ahead and move on and come back. Our next speaker is Chris Rodriguez. If you're available, could you please unmute?
Hello. My name is Chris Rodriguez, and I am a third-year science teacher at Del Valle Hill Leadership and STEAM Academy. I am here to speak about what is happening between, uh, on our campus. Now, I know that there are many pressing issues at hand during this time, but none are more important than the ones that affect our most underserved and underprivileged students. Del Valle Hill is home to the largest African-American population in the district. On their way to school, they have to walk past one of the biggest homeless populations in San Bernardino. They have to experience the sad reality of drug addiction just to go to the store to get a snack. They experience gang violence, gunshots, and traumatic deaths of their family and friends on a daily basis. As a Latino whose relatives live across the street from the school, I could say with certainty that the Latino population experiences much of the same. I could go on and on about how the special education building is being taken away from our sped teachers and students, or how Savant can go to harm it, or even about how the district has kept the teachers at Del Valle Hill in the dark about this issue. But, but to me, the issue is much bigger than that. What is happening to Del Valle Hill is what has been happening to African-Americans for 500 years in this country. Valuable resources are wrongly being withheld from African-Americans. It's the same reason Frederick Douglass wrote "My Bondage and My Freedom", the same reason Rosa Parks didn't get out of her seat, the same reason why Martin Luther King Jr. marched on Washington, and the same reason young Amanda Gorman recited that powerful poem "To the Country" on inauguration day. Valuable resources are being unjustly withheld from this community. Savant declares that the facilities will be equal, but just as my colleague, Mr. Dostasio, said, Savant is getting many facilities that Del Valle Hill has been asking for for a long time. Just as Brown versus Board of Education declares "Separate but equal" to be unconstitutional in 1954, the district should declare the addition of Savant Charter to our underserved campus as unjust. Please do what's right for our African-American and Latino communities and postpone the voting on the Savant Charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Consuelo Salas. If you're available, could you please unmute?
Hello? Um, I'm not sure what I can add to that. I'm a parent, and I'm concerned that when my student goes back to school, there's not going to be a place for him to go to. The homeless situation in the back of the school, even if they were to put portable buildings back there for the special ed needs kids to use, that's something that I don't want any child to have to experience before they have to. You know what I mean? Like, they shouldn't have to see all of that. Some of them do see it on a daily basis. I'm fortunate. My kids don't see that. They haven't been going to school, so they haven't experienced it. When they do go back to school, I don't want him to have to sit back there with the homeless people. I don't want him thinking, because I'm special education, I'm special needs, I am less than. I want him to be included with the rest of the students. And taking classrooms away from them to give to a charter school that the kids don't even live in this district just doesn't seem fair to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, just hold on a second here. Our next speaker, oh, here we go, is Brenda. Brenda, if you're available, could you please unmute? What was the last? I'll go ahead and move on and I'll come back.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Darlene Carter. If you're available, could you please unmute?
I don't.
Hello?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All righty, good afternoon, all. This is Darlene Addis-Carter. First of all, I would like to say thank you for your time. As I begin my comments, I will be passionate, so I want you to understand. And the reason why I will be passionate is because what I have to say is very dear and near to my heart. I'm speaking on behalf of the special education, our special needs students in San Bernardino City Unified School District. First and foremost, I would like for you to understand that I am a product of San Bernardino City Unified School District. I grew up in the same neighborhood as our President Rogers and Danny Tillman's family in San Bernardino between Mount Vernon and Western, between Gilbert and 16th Street. I grew, I went to San Bernardino City Unified School District from kindergarten to 12th grade. I graduated from Cahoon High School, went on to San Bernardino Valley College, where I received my AA, went on to Cal State San Bernardino, where I received a master's in education with emphasis in special education, a first-year, uh, generation graduate in my family. Now, the reason why I'm here, we all know that we're here because of Savant, but my main concern is special education and the way special education is treated, not only at Del Valle Hill Middle School, but throughout the district. I keep hearing that we are responsible to charter schools because of Proposition 39, but I also would like to bring to, uh, the board's mind and the district's mind that not only are you obligated to fulfill the Proposition 39, but you are also obligated to, uh, which is the Individual Educate, Individual with Disability Education Act. You're also responsible to fulfill the 504, um, Disability Act, the Rehabilitation and Disability Act of 1973. Now, the reason why I am really passionate and concerned, because before all of this took place, I took time out of my time to reach out to board members exactly for, only to bother to return. And I would just like to read what, write, read what I wrote to the board. And it wasn't, apparently it wasn't important because no one even bothered to listen. Uh, board members' name, I'm not quite sure if the board agrees to take the space from our students, uh, and special education staff at Del Valle Hill. If this is the case, I cannot and will not sit without a voice. For Mr. and Mrs. to sit on the board and state, uh, live stating that this space is not being used, well, let me shed some light on the matter. Starting with the special education pod, yes, we know the spectrum, which is also was a non-public special education place that was there with us for several years, that their, their, uh, contract, collaboration contract was not renewed in order to provide space for Savant. But that's neither here nor there. But I also went on to say the two additional rooms belong to our special education staff, consistent of our conference room, space to hold IEP meetings, pull-out testing, special ed with special accommodations listed for on the IEPs. The SE building was workspace for three RSP teachers, two LHPH tutors for small group pull-out confidential special education testing and progress management training, which would cause the special education staff to be placed in a one-third size of that. They took our space, put us in one room with, with partitions that we're supposed to be able to pull out students. We have students with accommodations that have to be tested in, in, uh, outside of the general population. They also have accommodations that have to be filled. But my, my, my concern is not so much that you want Savant to be there, but special education throughout the district have these pods. The pods was built for best special education. Various schools are taking classes, using them for professional development. They're supposed to have kitchens for the SH students, and instead of them having their kitchens in their pods, special ed staff, I mean, regular staff is using them for pot lucks and all kind of stuff. But my concern is, is because when we come back from COVID, we don't have a clue where we going to be. We have to be spaced out. I was on the planners team, we will only be able to have at least 14 people in a classroom. So at this time, I am requesting that this renewal be, uh, uh, delayed until we come back. And not only to go beyond what the lady said before, there is a procedure that is a three-step procedure for renewing the charter. And part of it is a two-year, uh, showing growth over two years. Savant has only been in operation a year and two years and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Derek Hoffman. If you're available, can you please unmute? Okay, I'll go ahead and move on to our next speaker. It is Grace. If Grace is available, can she please unmute?
Good evening.
Can you hear me? Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board. I am Grace Fady, the union rep at DV. I also live in the community that DV service. Yes, we provide a service for our students, parents, and community regardless of their humble beginnings. First, I would like to thank the board members that realize we are dealing with very serious issues here, one being the health and well-being of our student population and their families. I would like to thank Dr. Hill for requesting that Dr. Volkmer meet with our staff. However, as many of you know, we have been here before, meaning we are meeting with the same assembly from the district, and nothing was resolved. What will change, if anything? Only this time, our meeting is scheduled after contract hours on a Monday, and it is not mandatory. Why? The invite was sent over our district website. Why not meet during contract hours? We have professional development on Mondays, then classes. Why not show some consideration for our teachers with children during distant learning? Children that cannot wait for their parent to finish teaching and focus on their family's wants and needs. At every turn, there seems to be obstacles or conditions for our staff to meet. Excuse my skepticism, but what will be different with the same team at the same table? I would like to request that our new board member join the meeting, and perhaps we may hope for some level of impartiality. That being said, I asked at the last board meeting, what makes Savant so different from the other charter schools in our district? Why are they so deserving of our money and space? I researched PSA because over the years, I have always tried to get students to apply to the school that was once housed on our old Air Force Base Norton. Admission is still in high demand. They have a public lottery. They have a constant waiting list year-round because students thrive there. Their campus was too small, so they had to fundraise on their own for a new site. With all their success, it is shameful the way our district treats this charter, and over 50% of their population are SBCUSD students. Our district did not give any money to this site nor space. All their money came from the state. They had to outsource their own food company to provide lunch to students, provide their own security, switch to in-house special education department because our district was charging them to use their services. A large portion of their ADA was being used to pay for special education services from our district. Two years ago, they were in jeopardy of non-renewal per our district. This school had to rally to convince the board to renew their funding, to renew their, um, rally to convince the board to renew their charter, and they had to maintain their test scores to keep it. No gifts, grants, or funding was given to this site. So again, I ask, why is Savant so fortunate to be gifted almost a half a million dollars our special education building and multiple classrooms? Why allow an elementary charter to coexist on a middle school campus in a community that is socio-economically deprived? Why do we have to fight so vigorously to keep resources for our students when the district has ample space available elsewhere? This district has an elementary school operating on two campuses. Why? There are more suitable locations available. We respectfully request once again that this board postpone renewal. We respectfully request once again that this board postpone renewing Savant's charter. These are unprecedented times. We are in a pandemic. We cannot spare the space. Savant's renewal must not be based on testimonials and infomercials. They must be required to meet the same criteria for renewal like other charter schools within our district that service SBCUSD students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, I'm gonna try calling back the ones that didn't respond and see if any of them are there.
Okay.
Okay. Let me find them here. Jeffrey Frisk, are you available? Okay, Derek Hoffman. And the last one, Brenda.
Okay, Madam President, I don't believe they are available, and that's all the comments.
Okay, yes, I don't see those in there as well. Okay, thank you again. Thank everybody for their comments. I know they will be clicking off shortly. Thank you again. We are now moving to 8.0 reports and comments by union organizations, starting with 8.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association. Is there a representative?
Yes, thank you, President Rogers.
Thank you.
Good evening again, President Rogers, members of the board and cabinet, Superintendent Dr. Volkmer. I am Ashley Vitasalkala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the 3,000 members of SBTA. First, I want to thank the board for earlier this evening approving our MOU. We look forward to continuing distance learning through the end of the year and meeting our students' needs. Since the board last met, we've seen the COVID case numbers in our county continue to decline. However, we're still above what has become a moving target of guidance from the state, the COVID case rates at how many per 100,000. For our school district, as of this week, we are still above the new target for in-person learning only for elementary students, which is now 25 cases per 100,000. And I find it rather concerning that these numbers have dropped so dramatically over the past two weeks when we saw such high numbers consistently from mid-November to February. And now, as we have seen the focus move to vaccines, it seems that where is the focus on testing? It leads me to the question of, is the county testing enough people to get an accurate picture of how many are still ill and spreading the virus? It makes me wonder. We also have to question how quickly these numbers have dropped, as well as looking at the number of people who are getting tested daily for COVID as compared to what was getting tested over the Christmas holidays. It is also concerning that the changes within the state guidance, which if you remember in the fall, was seven cases per 100,000 unless you had an elementary waiver, but now has been moved up to 25. We also know that the UK variant, which has been found to be much more contagious, especially amongst children, has now been confirmed in Riverside and San Bernardino County. And what we're seeing in Europe, where many schools were open throughout the pandemic, they have now shuttered due to this new COVID variant that has been rampant. And the South African one is also starting to spread throughout the world and the United States. And just to the south of us in Escondido, they reopened for in-person learning about a week ago, and right away had to close and quarantine over 100 staff and students who were exposed to the virus. As we've heard Dr. Fauci say, the cavalry is now here. We have not one, but two approved vaccines, and possibly more in the near future that could provide an extra layer of protection that no amount of masking, ventilation, and distancing can assure when we are in-person learning with our students. And yet, the state has prioritized educators in Tier 1B for the vaccine. Yet our county public health department in San Bernardino has been allowed to define who is eligible however they see fit, which is further complicated by a limited supply of vaccine that is coming into the state. So San Bernardino County is only allowing educators who are currently in person to get the vaccine. And they are the only ones who are guaranteed access at this time. This has been highly frustrating and confusing for our members, who want to get back into person with their students, but want to do it safely, and they want that layer of protection with the vaccine. We are aware and thankful that the district is working with our local health organizations to set up vaccine clinics for employees, but we have no idea how long we'll have to wait to get broader access or when the county will say that all educators are approved, as the state has said. I would also like to point out that just because schools are open in certain places throughout the United States and the world, and they may not be leading to substantial community transmission, doesn't mean that there isn't individual risk to teachers and staff. And as I have said to the board before, it is imperative that we continue to look at our local context, COVID transmission rates within our community, and current scientific knowledge and guidance that we have in order to make informed decisions. Now is not the time to change course. COVID still is a highly contagious airborne virus, and the only way to ensure safety amongst our students, employees, and families remains continuing with distance learning. And I hope that we continue to stick with that decision through the end of the school year because we don't know when we're going to be able to access vaccines and get that layer of protection for our most vulnerable employees, not only our certificated members, but our classified brothers and sisters as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, 8.2 California School Employees Association. Is there a representative?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, board, and cabinet members. My name is Anya Jimenez, President of CSCA Chapter 183. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our members of CSCA. I want to congratulate the Teachers Association and the district on finalizing the negotiations that benefit both parties. CSCA has been in negotiations with the district since December and hope that we also can come to a mutual agreement very soon. I know you have heard all this before, but I would like the board to recognize and appreciate the classified workers that are currently in essential positions that do not have the option of working from home since the start of the pandemic. We look forward to a positive resolution of our current negotiations with continued open communication in the finalizing of our negotiations. Thank you again for your time, Madam President and board, and have a great evening.
Thank you. 8.3 Communication Workers of America. Is there a representative tonight?
Madam President, she had to leave the meeting.
Okay. All right, I will move to 8.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there a representative tonight? I don't see. Okay. All right, then we will move into our presentations. 9.1 Academic Achievement Update.
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, it's a pleasure to be in front of you again this evening. And as a follow-up to our presentation at the last board meeting, which was on Ds and Fs from our middle school students, as well as some attendance data, tonight, we're going to be presenting similar data related to our high school students. You'll see that we've made some progress from the first quarter to the second quarter or first semester, but we know we definitely have a lot of work left to do. And you're going to hear about some of the efforts that our teams are making to bridge that gap. And as we did last time, you're going to get to hear from administrators, teachers, students, and parents as to the efforts to keep our students engaged in learning. Now, we're going to give you a little heads up. The videos are a little long this evening, but we really wanted to give you the full flavor of all of the services that we've been able to maintain, even in a virtual environment, some that we've had to develop and create due to a virtual environment. And I want to take a moment to give a huge shout-out and kudos to our teams at the two high schools that you're going to see represented tonight. But not only them, all of our high schools, because there's something similar happening at every one of our schools for really their extra efforts in terms of bridging that gap and making sure that we're doing everything we can to provide service and success to our students. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Menares and Mrs. Applegate for our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. If we could pull the presentation up? Thank you. So good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, board members, Dr. Volkmer, community. We're happy this evening to share with you what's been happening at our high schools. So if I could have the next slide, we'll quickly go through the objectives for this evening. So as always, we will share with you our current COVID cases to date and an update on vaccinations, both at the county and our local context. Then you will see the DNF rates for Semester 1 from our high schools. Last month, or last board meeting, excuse me, was our middle schools. This is going to be specifically our high schools. As Dr. Volkmer shared, you will experience two videos, one from Pacific High School with Dr. Remundo and the Pacific Pirates, and another video from Cajun High School with Ms. Bishop and the Cowboys. So two different contexts of what's been going on in the safety nets and what difference that made for the Semester 1 grades for our high school students. And then finally, Ms. Applegate will close up with next steps for our SBCUSD Accelerated Student Achievement Plan, better known as ASAP Plan. Next slide, please. So board, this is just a quick overview of what took place at the February 2nd board meeting. After the February 2nd board meeting, we did host the virtual forum on February 9th to help our community employees learn more about the COVID-19 vaccine from local experts. We're very thankful for our partners. During the February 2nd board meeting, you conducted a public hearing regarding the renewal of Savant Preparatory Academy and requested additional information. You also received information about the Ds and Fs rate at our middle schools, as well as district-wide attendance. And while you recognized that more work is needed, you did commend our school staff for their extra efforts during, to help our students succeed. And then finally, board, we closed out that board meeting highlighting the great things happening in SBCUSD, notably that our Cajun Cowboys were the mock trial team to win the county-wide championship competition. So we're very proud of them, second year in a row. Student Wellness and Support Services, better known as Swiss in the district, received a Golden Bell Award, board, and again, that's because of the support that you provide for that program. Finally, Richardson Prep and North Verdumont Elementary were recognized in the 2019-20 Honor Roll for Educational Results Partnerships. So positive occurrences happening in SBCUSD. Next slide, please. We continue to use the guiding principles, and we heard you loud and clear this evening when we were talking about offering any kind of sports opportunities for our students, starting first and foremost with ensuring the health and physical safety of students and staff while we adhere to the local, state, and county guidance. Tonight, you'll hear about how we're providing high-quality learning experiences at our high schools and still working to provide safe and accessible working conditions for our staff. Next slide, please. We want to keep bringing this back, board. We continue to stay in Phase 1 Distance Learning Per Your Direction and Courageous Action on November 17th. To stay in there, we will only move into Phase 2, which would be that Distance Learning Plus, where we may offer some small cohorts of instruction to further support students who are in need of that, perhaps learning hubs. But again, everything will be brought back to you, board, so that you make that decision when you deem it safe to do so. And from there, I believe we're going to move into our COVID rates to date, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Betier.
Thank you. Yeah, next slide, please. Thank you, Dr. Menares. Good evening, board, cabinet, and community. Although we're still in the widespread tier, we do continue to see a decline in both new cases and positivity rate. We're also seeing a matching decline in testing. We have dropped below the 25 new cases per 100,000 residents at the county level, but we're still sitting in the 30s within the city of San Bernardino, Highland, and the district boundaries. We're also closely monitoring the updates and the impacts of the various mutations that are being publicized, their severity, and their impact. Our incident management team is currently reviewing a 25-page document that was released from the CDC on Friday recommending a change in the tier systems. Any change within California will come from our California Department of Public Health, which has not come out yet, and we will keep you posted as we know more. Next slide, please. So while we're hearing about the plans to increase vaccinations, it's still an issue of supply and demand. Within our county, only about 420,000 doses have been administered. As a county with 2.2 million people, we know we're going to need about 4.5 million doses. We will likely be into the summer months before vaccines are widely available. As it relates to the educational workforce, San Bernardino County has only prioritized vaccinations for school employees within districts that are in-person or planning to return to in-person this school year. For students and children, trials are currently underway for children ages 12 and older. And preliminarily, what we're hearing is it appears to be in late 2021 or early 2022 before vaccinations will be authorized for anyone younger than age 12. So patience, as it relates to the vaccine, is going to be key over the next several months. These are the COVID-related updates we have for you this evening, board. Thank you very much.
Okay, if we can go to the next slide, please. Next slide. So thank you. Good evening, board, cabinet, and to our members out there. I wanted to come back and share with you our data around Ds and Fs for our high schools. At this time, we're going to see a comparison of our first-quarter progress report grades to our semester grades. Next slide, please. And can I pause you just for one moment? Dr. Flores, did you have a question on the previous information about the vaccinations?
Yes, I did, for Mr. Betier. Do we have a way of knowing how many of our children, our students, have been tested and what the results are?
Dr. Flores, I can look into that. I know the numbers that have been given to us by the county were, as it related to positivity rates. And I don't know that they've broken down the specifics as far as school districts. So I could probably find data as it relates to children countywide that have been vaccinated or tested, but I'm not sure if we can get specific.
What I would be concerned with or wanting to know is our students in our district and in our city. And also, you know, our community, our parents. And do we know about the deaths? You know, what's the rate of deaths? And, I mean, these, I'm not criticizing you. I know this is the data that's there, but, you know, specifically, we need to know that. Secondly, it's, how do you say, unacceptable that only those districts that are going to open up in-person-to-person that their staffs get vaccinated. That's ridiculous. Everybody has to be vaccinated. And what I've been reading in the New York Times, the Washington Post, the Wall Street Journal, you know, LA Times, is that we're going to get an influx of vaccines, and the goal is to vaccinate everybody in the United States by July. And so, you know, right now, we have a dearth of vaccinations, not enough. But within the next two to three weeks or month, that could change. And also, that President Biden and Vice President Harris and their Congress are going to probably be passing the COVID Relief Act soon, and that our pharmacies, like, you know, Walgreens and CVS and others, even Walmart, will be providing vaccinations. So I think we have to keep all of that in mind as well in terms of our context. But what concerns me the most is we don't have data. We don't have data on our district, on our students, our families, and our city. And that disturbs me and that concerns me because I don't want to go on averages by the county. That's not helpful, you know. So I just wanted to make that statement. You know, so I just wanted to make that statement, those statements, Madam President and fellow Board members in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Applegate.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. So going back to the data, you can see the graph in front of you that compares the first quarter progress report grades to the first semester grades for our high school students, and this is in the area of English Language Arts. And as you can see, the trend is good. We can see that overall, we've gone from about 46% of students getting Ds and Fs to 39% of students getting Ds and Fs. And with the numbers that you can see, right around 800 or so that have dropped in their Ds and Fs. So that's a good trend. Next slide, please. And then you can see a similar trend in mathematics as well, where our students are receiving less Ds and Fs than they were in their first quarter progress report grades. And again, it goes across the different subgroups. Okay, next slide, please. And so, Board, we want to take you back to our Principles of Distance Learning. What you're going to be hearing from the high schools is going to be a very comprehensive overview of all the different protocols, activities, strategies that they've put in place to make sure that their students are accelerating their learning, they're not falling behind, and they're definitely meeting the needs of all their kids. Next slide, please. We did mention some safety nets in the last presentation around what some of the schools are doing. And you will see, so you can listen for safety nets with an instruction, family engagement, student engagement, some of the similar ones that you heard last time as well. And I'd also like you to notice that we do have several accommodations and different protocols for our special education students as well. A lot of the adaptive technology that was provided by the Special Ed Department. So you're going to see an effort around trying to make sure that all of our students are learning and doing well during this distance learning time. So I'd like to go ahead and share with you then the highlight of the two high schools and their comprehensive overview for how they're helping to meet the needs of students. Next slide, please. Before we do, we do have one safety net that we were going to have Dr. Rodriguez speak to around attendance.
We are super excited about Operation Student Recovery 1000. Did some homework and spoke to our former Director of Youth Services. And he told me that their highest number that they've ever gone out to recover were 600 students. And so, we are now, our goal is to visit 1,000. We need 100 teams. And so, we are now, so we need 200 people. We're at 140 people, so we need 60 more. So we are looking for community volunteers. We're also looking for our staff members to join us in this effort. We will be focusing on our African-American students and English learner students to assist them to find out why they're chronically absent and to provide the resources that they need so they can fully engage in the educational process. The visits will be on February the 23rd from 9:00 to 12:00. You can see there, people can sign up, and this was a great idea from one of our local city council people, Ben Reynoso, who will also be out there with us. Bring 1,000 back. That's our goal. We're setting a precedent. And this is our kickoff for many home visits that we will have in order to bring back our students. We miss them. We want them to be successful. And we are doing whatever it takes to recover our kids and bring them back to school. So we're excited about that. We were going to do everything that we can to just really vitalize and invigorate the community by having 1,000 students recovered in one day. That is our goal. We have partnered with ETA. ETA will be meeting with the entire Student Services Division so that we can strategize with him, with our Director of ETA. Because we are committed. We are committed to following up to ensure that all African-American students, all English learner students, all Latino students, every student in this district has the opportunity and access to education. And so, we're really looking forward to that. And if there are people out there that are interested, please sign up. We would love to have you. And, you know, one person can make a difference. And you going out there and knocking on that door is going to make a difference to students out there, their families out there. They need to know that we care and that we're willing to do what we need to do, whatever it takes to bring back students to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. And now, we'd like to go ahead, and if you can forward the slide, we will showcase our two high schools. And we thank our principals for all their work. They are here with us, and they will be here at the end of the video in case you have any questions or comments. That would be Dr. Natalie Remundo and Ms. Tina Bishop. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board Members, Dr. Volkmer, Cabinet, and Community. I'm Natalie Remundo, and I have the honor of serving at Pacific High School as Principal. I'm here tonight to talk with you about how Pacific is serving our students during distance learning, particularly in supports. There are so many ways that our staff are helping to support students and families during distance learning. The hard part was narrowing it down, just a couple of things to talk about. Tonight, I'm going to focus on three main things. One, our advisory period, which is school-wide, supports beyond the school day and extended time. And finally, additional supports for our focus groups. The first support that I wanted to speak about is our advisory period. Advisory is during the day, once a week. The lessons are developed by a team of teachers, support staff, and counselors. The standards we use for the advisory class include our own Pirate Code and PBIS Tenets, socio-emotional learning using the CASL competencies, and our own 5 Cs, Pacific's student learning outcomes as identified during our WASC accreditation cycle. The advisory lessons are built for teachers by the advisory team, so teachers just need to deliver the lesson, although teachers are free to put their own spin and their own personality into them. The advisory lessons contain grade checks and goal-setting, PBIS lessons around our Pirate Code, school and ASB announcements, mental health and mindfulness lessons, building relationships with peers and teachers through fun brain breaks and team-building activities, socio-emotional learning via the CASL competencies, as I said, and connecting students to resources available on our campus and in the community. Something we added to advisory this year due to distance learning is the How Are You Feeling check-in. In addition to our Panorama survey data, this weekly data also gives us information about how our students are doing. We use the data from the How Are You Feeling to design future advisory lessons and interventions. For example, in October, November, and December, we saw that our numbers of students that were saying they were worried was increasing. Counselors and teachers who have been trained in neurodiversity created lessons around mindfulness and coping strategies. We did have a decrease in students reporting that they were worried in January after several lessons like this. As you can see, a lot of our students are reporting now that they are bored. 32.2% said they were bored in January. I'd rather our students be bored than worried, but we're working on the boredom as well. Students are struggling without the social connections that they're used to having, and so we're increasing programs like our CAPS Clubs. We also have some virtual movie nights and other social activities planned in the next coming weeks. Another thing we added in January was our virtual calming room. Our counselors and advisory team work together to find activities and things to help students de-stress and let go of those anxieties and worries. If students click on the counselor's corner up at the top, they have access to counseling resources and helplines, as well as the Google Voice members of all the counselors. Additionally, on Wednesdays, Ms. Moore, one of our CTE art teachers, as well as our counseling team, have instituted Wellness Wednesdays. It's an open Google Meet where students can jump in and participate in mindfulness activities. To wrap up our presentation on our advisory period, I have Program Specialist Becky Huff, who is a member of our advisory team, as well as two students, seniors Arlie and Madison.
So tell me, Arlie, what parts of advisory have you found the most helpful?
I have found the parts of advisory I found the most helpful has been the ones about mental health, because during these times, like teenagers, either their mental health gets better or worse. So it helps, it just gives us a new, a different reality to think about. And then, I like the escape rooms you guys have done. Those have been really good and like give us spring breaks to do.
Wonderful. What would you say was your favorite lesson around mental health?
My favorite lesson around mental health has been the one about the seven stages of grief. Because as a class, we shared our experiences, and my teacher, Ms. Quinlan, she really got like really connected with us in that level. Because we all have experienced a type of grief, and it just helps us like know that someone is there for us.
All right. Thank you, Madison, for joining us today. Our first question is, what parts of advisory have you found helpful?
The ones I think I find most helpful are the ones that include the breathing exercises and then also us reflecting back on our grades. The breathing, because it just helps like students, especially seniors right now, kind of relax and de-stress and stay calm. And the grade ones, I think that's fundamental for everybody. So they're able to see what they're working on and what they also need help on. So it's just kind of good to help as a self-reflection form.
That leads me to my next question. What supports have you received from your teachers?
Some teachers have either, they give us like break rooms to go to. So if we need help such as math, he's like, oh, if you need to go get help, you could go to this room. Or like Ms. Quinlan, she did this one time. She broke us up. She did a separate breakout room, and then she called us one by one to go into them. She just asked us how we're doing and then if we have any missing assignments and what we need to get done.
Or reaching out to me, especially if I've specified that I'm struggling or that I need help. My AP stats teacher, he reached out to me when I stated I was feeling anxious on his survey when we came back to school. So that was really helpful and comforting to know that teachers are also looking out for us. So teachers emailing in like an appropriate time manner is one of the best things that have honestly been helping me right now.
For the advisory lessons, when we survey our students to check and see how you're feeling every week, how do you feel students do responding to those, and what do you think of those lessons?
I feel like it helps us know that you guys like care for us and want to know how we're feeling each week. And as well as, I feel that you guys should add more like multiple choice questions or like an other bar, because sometimes the responses or like the emojis don't like fit how we were feeling that week. But overall, it helps us know that you guys care. It's just like a nice little check-in, and it helps us check in on ourselves so we can see how we're doing for the week.
So advisory is our support during the school day. After the school day, we also have a CAPS program. Through CAPS, we have tutoring, academic supports, as well as a lot of enrichment activities for students to participate in, including a book club, which has actually kind of gotten off the ground as a popular club. Other things we have are a baking club, as well as our esports league. It's one of the sports that's been able to go on, believe it or not. Esports is a CIF sport now, and our Pacific Pirates were able to go to the first round of playoffs this year. Other clubs that we have and are supported by our CAPS program are our Best Buddies Club, as well as our GSA and BSU. We found out early on that students were having trouble keeping up with schoolwork and meeting deadlines. And so, we had Operation Ditch the Ds, where teachers offered time at lunch after school during office hours to accept students' late work. Teachers continued to accept late work throughout the semester. In addition, teachers told students about the top five priority assignments. So things that were like projects, essays, things that would earn a lot of points and demonstrated a lot of learning so that students could make decisions about what work was worthy of doing if they were running out of time. Another thing our teachers are doing is we have about half of our staff right now are offering second chance second semester. And that's for courses like English, math, some of our CTE courses, and some of our sciences, where students have the opportunity to continue building the skills that they learned first semester and demonstrating more advanced levels of that, of those skills in second semester. So those teachers feel that in order to be successful in second semester and pass the course with a C or better, they have to have demonstrated some of the skills and learnings from first semester. Here's Deborah Harper, our ELA Department Chair, to tell you more.
Our department policy is that students who pass second semester with a C or higher, but earned a D or F first semester, grade changes will be issued raising that first semester grade to a C. We adopted this policy in order to acknowledge and reward those students who demonstrate significant gains and improvement.
Additional supports beyond the school day have included Saturday School, which we've been hosting since August and continue on through second semester. After-school tutoring provided by teachers, CAP staff, and our staff from The Cove, which you'll hear about pretty soon. Use of Remind with direct access to teachers for parents and students. Many of our teachers are texting back and forth with students well into the evening as they work on their homework. Additionally, we hosted a winter intercession, January 4th through 7th during winter break. We had 174 students that attended. Teacher office hours, 2:15 to 2:55 every day. And spring intercession, just like winter intercession that we will offer during spring break. We also offer additional supports for focus subgroups. Our Pirate Support Team is made up of counselors, classified staff, certificated support staff that are non-classroom. They've been assigned caseloads of students to check in with weekly. They provide access to resources and help remove barriers. They do goal-setting and grade checks. The students served are all of our off-track seniors, so seniors that look like they may not graduate without some intervention, our African-American students, English learners, foster youth, and special education. Additional supports for our English learner include instructional paraprofessional staff that support in their classes, support and tutoring during the day for asynchronous work. Bilingual tutors are available after school, bilingual support during Saturday School and winter intercession, and of course, during spring intercession when we offer it, as well as data chats with teachers. Our students with disabilities also get paraprofessional support in their classes. They also get support and tutoring during the day for help with their asynchronous work by the paraprofessionals. Our paraprofessionals are also serving after school with additional duty hours to serve our students with disabilities. In addition, during winter intercession, we had three special education teachers and five special education paraprofessionals assigned specifically to support our students with disabilities. Another comment about winter intercession, that was also an extended time offered for students to be able to complete work from first semester. Even though the semester had ended, our teachers were willing to take work from students during that winter break. Another one of our focus groups are ninth graders. The transition from middle school to high school is always difficult, but it appears to be even more difficult for distance learning. And so, we adopted a middle school-like model for our ninth graders. All ninth graders are on a team with their core classes of ELA, math, and biology. The teams participate in data chats, interventions, and team meetings. For each of these supports that I've talked about tonight, I could probably do an entire presentation. But since I only have a few minutes, I did want to mention The Cove, our Tier 2 intervention. The premise behind The Cove is that tutoring is necessary but not sufficient to help students maintain a good GPA and good academic hygiene, so to speak. And so, part of what our mentors do is meet with students and help them to build the organizational skills, time management, study skills to help them be successful at school. And so, The Cove is a combination of mentoring and tutoring. And so, some college student interns act as mentors, while others, we hire specifically for their subject matter knowledge. Many of our Cove interns are previous Pacific graduates, like Serena Martinez, who was a 26. like Serena Martinez, who was a twenty-sixteen PHS graduate. In addition, Jose Acevedo, who um runs our program, is an instructional tutor at Pacific and he was a two thousand eight graduate. Many of our college student interns join us because they are interested in being teachers. And some of them have found out that they do wanna be teachers, even though they thought they wanted to be business majors or something else. The thing I love about The Cove is it's a dual-purpose program. We're helping our graduates um find employment and support their college education. And at the same time, recruiting teachers for our district because many of our interns have gone on to credential programs and actually have been hired by the district. And of course, our students benefit from um the services provided. In closing, I wanna say a big thank you. Thank you to the Pacific staff, both classified and certificated, as well as our interns for all of your hard work and support. I wanna thank the board, cabinet and community, not only for listening tonight, but also for supporting our programs. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening, we're President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, board members, superintendent's cabinet and our esteemed community. My name is Tanya Bishop and I have the honor and privilege of being the principal of Cajon High School. Tonight, I am grateful for the opportunity to highlight the things we are doing at Cajon to promote positive student outcomes during these unprecedented times. What we offer you this evening is only a sampling of the great efforts our high schools throughout the district are making to address the academic and social emotional needs of our students. At Cajon, we realize we have the responsibility to keep our commitment to students by providing a meaningful learning experience and supporting them along the way. At this time, I would like to invite some of my amazing staff members to share how Cajon is implementing the core five principles of distance learning in our efforts to achieve positive student outcomes.
Good evening. My name is Austin Piazza and I'm a demonstration teacher at Cajon High School. Our work for planning for the twenty-twenty-one virtual school year began with the close of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Wanting to take advantage of our last school year, our assembled PDSIT team with the support of our counseling department sent out a Google form that sought to acquire feedback from our students and community. Feedback that was received indicated that our students found success through a clear, consistent organization of Google Classroom across the site and explicit instructions from their teachers. Using this data to drive decision-making, we worked to create a consistent structure that our teachers use to organize their virtual classrooms. We continued training efforts using John Hattie's research on visible learning and teacher clarity to support our teachers in their efforts to reach their students. Our PDSIT team housed screencasts on Google Classroom, which helped support teachers in transitioning into a virtual platform. Working with our site culture and climate team, we maintained the expectations to have clear behavior expectations through our pride matrices, but made the appropriate changes to accommodate for distance learning. Our HERO program works to provide positive incentives to support seeing those positive behaviors in virtual classrooms. Continuing with our site focus of assessment for mastery, yet also wanting to meet the challenging time constraints of distance learning, we continued to provide training for our staff, including the work of Doug Reeves and Rubric-based grading. We also know that right now our students are facing diverse struggles. And in response, we created a bell schedule with a designated class to provide SEL lessons from our support and counseling staff and a homeroom for additional support. Lastly, our site continues to seek out feedback from our community through Coffee with Cajon to assist us in the planning process. On the next slide, there are some examples of ways in which Cajon has implemented distance learning, the Cajon Way. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Bone and I'm the film teacher, pathway lead and speech and debate coach for Cajon. And I wanna talk a little bit about how those plans go into action in the classroom. Our main focus as educators is to make sure that we maintain a level of rigor without compromising clarity for our students. One of the ways that we do that is the teachers, as experts in their field, have chosen the applications, the programs, the platforms that are best suited to their curricular areas and have mastered them, not only for a smooth educational experience, but also so that we can offer support for our students. We've also embraced virtual experiences across the curriculum. And our ID students, our Pathway students, Avid students, MAPPA students, whatever program they're in, have enjoyed museum visits, uh Q and A sessions with industry leaders and classroom visits from subject specialists to, to make for a more enriching um educational experience. We've also uh understand, come to understand that communication is really important during this time. And we make sure that we offer one-on-one opportunities best we can. We, all of the teachers have office hours and can provide one-on-one tutoring for our students. We also offer them reassessment for mastery and grade recovery in, also in a one-on-one situation so that students who are experiencing personal uh changes in their lives are getting that special um attention that they need. We're also offering opportunities for peer collaboration in breakout rooms and small group activities. And we are offering emotional support on Mondays. We also make sure that we're communicating with families uh on a regular basis and through ARES reports and remind messages and parent-teacher conferences, which, which still happen on a regular basis. On the next slide, you can see some of these in action. We have student pacing guides. We have uh our uniform classroom setup and our feedback forum so that students can um make sure that we know what's going on in their lives.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Parham and I'm one of the counselors at Cajon High School. I would like to highlight the ways in which we are using a tiered system of support for both proactive intervention and student recognition. At the tier one level, all students have access to school-wide tutoring after school across different content areas. They can also access tutoring individually with their teachers. This year, Cajon counselors joined teachers' Google classrooms and presented grade-level presentations for students in order to discuss the importance of grades, attendance and other grade-level specific information. For example, the senior classroom presentations focused on providing student support with how to complete college applications, BASPA and their senior portfolios. During the fall semester, counselors held one-on-one progress review meetings with their students. The primary focus of these meetings was to conduct social emotional wellness checks with our students while also addressing academic and attendance concerns. Counselors were able to successfully meet with ninety percent of our student population this fall. For Tier Two, our school provides credit recovery opportunities through Apex and Saturday School to support meeting both A through G and graduation requirements. Our wellness team works to identify a smaller group of students in need of additional support and provide them with one of the following interventions in hopes of achieving greater success. Small group instruction, check and connect, check and checkout and peer mentorship are all Tier Two interventions used by the wellness team. Cajon has also used parent communication as a form of proactive intervention. Our counseling and attendance teams have sent postcards and letters home to families to try and get in touch with students who have been identified as either non-engaging, non-attending or credit deficient in order to offer support. At the Tier Three level, counselors have been able to conduct virtual safety and risk assessments and refer students and families to mental health services as needed. Our tiered recognition systems include the use of HERO points for all students meeting school-wide expectations at the Tier One level. For Tier Two, we have systems in place to honor our students who are in perfect attendance on a quarterly basis. First quarter, there were one hundred and fifty-one students who were recognized. And second quarter, there were one hundred and forty-six students recognized for perfect attendance. These students had Cajon spirit items mailed home as a marking of their success. We have also been able to recognize our students for their academic success through honor roll recognition and academic awards. We had a total of one thousand and sixty-one students who made honor roll last fall, earning at least a three-point-five GPA or higher during, during distance learning. Next, I would like to direct your attention to the right side of the slide, which lists a few of our school-wide events that have happened using a virtual platform to promote both student and parent engagement. On the next slide, you will see examples of school-wide tutoring, the progress review schedule, mock scholarship interviews, senior portfolios and student recognition systems in action. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tuia Finley and I have the great pleasure of being the program facilitator for Cajon High School. I'm gonna be speaking to you this evening about the supports for targeted populations that we have at Cajon High School. At Cajon High School, we believe school-wide data monitoring and systems of support have led to school-wide success. In addition to traditional school-wide assessment data, we have several enhanced practices to meet the needs of students during COVID. Earlier in the presentation, you heard mentioned our Monday morning schedule where students receive SEL lessons. At the end of each of those lessons, students check in to determine their SEL state and counselor's follow-up is needed. We also have additional attendance monitoring during COVID that makes use of support staff and resident subs to identify students who may be at risk for chronic accidents. Finally, Monday MOU time is also used to collaboratively review student grades and plan for reteaching to address areas of mislearning. There are several systems of support at Cajon High School. We have a culture and climate team that examines Tier One behavioral data and identifies school-wide strategies to address areas of concern and reward students that are meeting expectations. We also have a wellness team that looks at Tier Two and Tier Three supports for identified students based on their grades, attendance and any catastrophic events that students or their families may be experiencing to ensure that all students receive support. Cajon High School is continuing the work of the African-American task force by focusing on re-engagement of our African-American families. Finally, Cajon also has an EL and foster homeless student support team that looks specifically at the achievement data of those students to ensure that they have accesses to, um access, excuse me, to resources that support their continued achievement. Some specific examples of school-wide success that I'd like to speak to you tonight are shown on the diagram in front of you. For example, in twenty-twenty, Cajon was recognized as a California Community Care's PBIS site. In addition, Cajon has entered into a partnership with Blue Educational Foundation to promote African-American parent re-engagement. Finally, we have a very popular mentoring program for African-American and Latino students that supports student continued achievement. Finally, all of these efforts are supported by a school re-engagement team made up of our administration, counselors and concerned staff to continue to ensure that all students' needs are met. On the next, you will see examples of students participating in activities that align with our school-wide vision statement and expectations, such as mentoring programs, school-wide tutoring or individual tutoring during asynchronous, asynchronous time that make our vision statement a reality. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aspen Lyons and I'm a special education resource teacher at Cajon. I will be sharing the ways in which we are supporting our resource population through distance learning. Our resource staff, teachers and tutors included, have created Google classrooms as a place to provide support and tutoring. We also use these, utilize these classrooms to post classroom notes, resources, provide accommodations such as extended time to complete tests or quizzes and communicate with our individual caseloads. We have consistent weekly office hours where students can attend one-on-one or small group tutoring. Students have the option to attend tutoring with a specific teacher that attends their class or with a specific tutor that attends their class or their individual case carrier. We also provide breakout room sessions during synchronous learning time. In these breakout rooms, we provide targeted support, scaffolding and reteaching opportunities. We also ensure that all accommodations are being met in the general setting and update teachers as our annuals roll out. We also model to help our students navigate all over their Google classrooms. While we do have uniformity among the Google classrooms at Cajon, some students who may have visual processing difficulties may still become overwhelmed. Some of the ways in which we track and respond to attendance and assignment completion include tracking attendance through ARES and reaching out to parents, counselors and vice principals as needed. We've also created an attendance tracking document that is used by all of our resource staff. And um we use this as a way to know when we need to reach out to parents as well. Um, we also uh check and monitor our individual caseloads' ARES accounts and encourage students to attend tutoring sessions to complete and submit any missing assignments. We perform informal assessments and utilize Let's Go Learn uh to help guide our accommodations, goals and interventions needed within the classroom. Um, we also are addressing social emotional learning by initiating wellness checks as needed. We, in addition, we refer students to their counselors if they need additional wellness resource support. And we also have the option to explore the opportunity of uh including ERMAs as a component of their IEP, which is educationally related mental health services. We are currently using assistive technology such as Don Johnson Snap and Read and Co-Rider, which helps students in reading and writing their assignments. Uh, we utilize Goalbook to assist us in writing appropriate goals and progress assessments. And again, Let's Go Learn as an added assessment tool. The resource team communicates with students on a consistent basis as well as communicating between our teachers and RSP teachers and tutors uh during synchronous sessions. We will notify a parent if we notice that their student is not in the live session and encourage them to have them log in. On the next slide, you will see some of our evidences of support. Um, some of the examples here that you see are our Google classroom setups, our informal and assistive technology resources and some of our live tutoring sessions. Thank you for your time.
You've had a chance to hear from the staff of Cajon High School. We would like to now take a moment, a brief moment, to share the thoughts of our students and our parents.
Hello, my name is Demarion Harris and I'm a tenth grader from Cajon High School. The purpose of this video is to talk about my experience during distance learning. During distance learning, I am able to take advantage of teachers' off hours by virtually, which is easier than physically because virtually is like click away where physically you gotta go across the campus, but you might not make it in time. My teachers' Google classrooms were organized by weeks. For instance, if I need to find an assignment for Google Classroom on week thirteen, then I will go on my Classware tab to find it because of how organized their Google Classroom are. There are clear expectations for assignments and behavior during the class sessions. For instance, Mr. Piazza shows the success criteria and the learning objectives. Like when he creates the endnotes for us and lets us write a, a social question for our notebooks. Last week, my teacher, Bone, above and beyond in numerous ways. I would like to thank Mrs. Bone for giving me a once-in-a-hire time opportunity to watch one night and meet the cast. When I couldn't access the Q and A, I emailed Mrs. Bone and she emailed me back real quick after off hours to give me that chance to be a part of the Q and A.
I'm a tenth grader from Cajon High School and I wanna share my distance learning experience with you. In the beginning, I tended to struggle with keeping up with my work. Eventually, I worked with the courage to talk to my teachers and they were all very supportive and kind. And that support has led to me consistently keeping up with my good grades. One thing that I found helpful was the organization of Google Classroom. Since every teacher uses it, it was very easy to keep up with my work. Another thing I found helpful was the way they engage with us during class. Simply by letting us know they wanted to hear what we had to say. That was helpful. What was helpful was the bell schedule. On Mondays, we attend homeroom and for the rest of the week, we have synchronous and asynchronous time, which gave us plenty of time to complete our work. I just want to say thank you Cajon and teachers for making my distance learning year better.
Hi, I'm a student who goes to Cajon High School. I'd like to talk about how my distance learning is going. Personally, I like how my distance learning is going because I get to communicate with my teachers through Google Classroom or Remind clarify any information on homework. My only challenges would be that I'm not interacting with any teachers in person or with friends from school. And my motivation is that I'm in the California Scholarship Federation Club, which keeps me motivated to keep up my grades positively.
Hi, I'm a parent of a student that attends Cajon High School. I want to talk about my experience during this time during distance learning as a parent. And immediately this year, I was worried and hesitant that my daughter wouldn't receive any support from any of her teachers due to not having in-person interactions with the teachers or classmates. But here we are, already in the middle of the school year. I want to say thank you to all the teachers that have been there that was able to support her during office hours. My daughter was able to reach out through them with Remind apps, Google Classroom. I can't thank you enough.
This is my hopes that you were able to see how committed Cajon is to ensuring the success of students. Ideally, each of our students would have experienced success during the first semester. Unfortunately, that was not our reality. We know that the work must continue and we must make every effort to support students. As a result, we continue to modify our practice equitably based on both qualitative and quantitative data. In addition, we are creating opportunities to fill learning gaps now and help students not fall further behind. One example would be how we are repurposing Saturday School. We are excited about offering a unique learning opportunity to students, grades nine through 12, to remediate and recapture credits. Our first Saturday School was February 6th and we believe it was a great success. We enrolled 275 students and we had 200 students in attendance the first week. Our students engage in project-based learning while vigorously mastering content standards. We have since contacted those who did not attend and have faith that numbers of students in attendance will increase. We are determined. Thank you again for the opportunity to highlight the commitment of my extraordinary staff as we aspire to provide equity, access, and opportunity to meet the needs of our students.
And that concludes the video portion, Board. And as you can see, both of our principals are here with us, Dr. Raimundo and Ms. Bishop. Just the comprehensive approach that our high schools have given to make sure they're meeting the needs of all of our students. And I, I just, if there's any silver lining that we can see at all from this pandemic is just the effort from, from all of our staff to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our kids. And we're hoping to take a lot of these practices on with us when we come back in-person learning because obviously many of these activities and strategies are very, very effective.
Excellent. And thank you. Let me start with Dr. Flores.
Board President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board members, Dr. Volcomer, Cabinet.
Stop it.
Good evening.
I want to say good evening each time, huh? Dr. Flores, are you, are you coming off mute?
Yeah, I'm coming from off-mute. You restarted it, right? Are you done yet? I can wait till Anna is done.
Okay, she'll go over the next steps. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so that takes us to our next steps. And Board, as you know, we are committed to not only creating, developing, but implementing an accelerated student achievement plan or ASAP plan. However, we do want to let you know that there is current legislation in process right now from Assemblywoman Gonzalez, AB 104. And there are some very specific guidelines. It's kind of a roadmap that the state wants to implement for districts to be able to meet the needs of all students and to extend learning for our students. It's in process, as I mentioned. The hearing was postponed last week, probably will happen this week. And then obviously we'll see if that gets passed into law, but it is gaining a lot of traction and we know that the state will have a big part in providing guidance for us as far as what we need to implement to help students achieve and to help learning expand. So I was just going to briefly go over a few of the things that are pointed out in AB 104. Some of the key points revolve around grading flexibility. As you've heard, our leaders and our staffs have already taken that on and they've done quite a bit toward being more flexible in their grading. However, in AB 104, it talks specifically about our seniors being able to petition to have pass and no-pass grades on some of the graduation-required classes. There's also, they're, they're suggesting that we align our state graduation requirements, align our graduation requirements with the state graduation requirements as we know ours are above and beyond. Many districts in our neighboring area have already done that, Board. So if you would see that as something that you'd want to move forward on, we have been talking with high school principals and they're on board to align those graduation requirements to the state requirements. There is also quite a bit there about extended learning opportunities. We're talking about a very comprehensive summer school, which is a longer time, more hours in the day. It's specific about different content areas being taught in order to recapture learning for many of our students. And we're talking about summer school for everyone under that law. There's also some mention in there about districts having the flexibility to extend their school year. You've already heard about Saturday School that is going on at some of our schools. And there's specific guidance on retention and what that might look like if parents are, are told that they have the right to retain their students. That is in there as well. However, as you know, that hasn't been passed this law yet, but just putting it on your radar that the state will have guidance to whatever plan we come up with that is specific to recuperating learning for our students.
Excellent. All right. So as Dr. Flores is coming on in, and Dr. Volcomer, just for clarity's sake, again, I know Dr. Wyatt and I had brought you to the attention to look at our policies. So that's something that we've already requested to be done. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I, I want to commend both schools. Dr. Raimundo and Ms. Bishop, your staffs, your kids, your counselors, your whole staff, I mean, the parents. It's just amazing to see all the details. And they're just not details. It's about human connection, authentic human connection and to hear the kids, you know, talk about how they're connected. That's what they told us. We want people to care for us. We want not just the kids, but the parents. And I commend your staff, Ms. Bishop, for reaching out to our African-American kids and our, and our, and our parents, as well as you, Dr. Raimundo, in terms of our African-American and Latino kids. You can hear in their voices that they appreciate and feel like, you know, I see you, right? You're, you're there and that's what's important. And to the teachers, I just, I felt so warm to hear you, to hear your authenticity and caring. And that's what our students want. They want that caring. What I would like it to also translate to, once we get out of the pandemic, is the increase in our metrics, in our graduation rates, in our A-through-G completions, in our decrease in our Ds and Fs, you know, as we move forward. And, and I'm sure that that will come. But I, I think that that's great and the Saturday Schools are really, really important. And President Rogers and Vice President Wyatt, I, I'm assuming that you're saying that we, the Board, should move forward to exploring the alignment of our graduation requirements for the state? Is that what you were?
Yes, because it is my understanding that there is something in the policy. We have a policy that we can invoke and so, yes, we have.
Okay, well, I support that. I think we need to do that. All the, all the items in AB 104 are really important. And our high schools need more support. We need to, as a Board, we need to support them more. And, and also, you know, we want our kids to be achievers. We want them to be well, how would you say, knowledgeable and also very confident when they, whatever they pick, their career or, or going on to college. And, you know, you, both of your schools are exemplary of what you're doing in, in that area in terms of, you know, we talk about wellness. We talk about social-emotional. We talk about, you know, connecting with the kids. But you actually put structures in place to do that. And like Ms. Applegate said, we need to continue that and reach out to our kids, you know, via distance learning when we can't reach. We all know how to do that now and that's really important. I watch my granddaughter and when they're in chat, in their little chats, they're connecting left and right. And just like the kids said, the high school kid said, well, I really like to be with my friends and we can, you know, we have, what do they call them? Brain? I don't remember what, what the term was, but.
Brain breaks?
Yeah, brain, brain breaks, you know, and I mean, that's important, right? And so I just commend you and keep going and, you know, we're here for you. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And Dr. Hill, I know you put in there excellent presentation from Cajon and Pacific. Your passion is evident. Thank you so much. Did you want to add anything to that?
Just congratulations and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Awesome. And Ms. Sevaios?
Yes, thank you. Ditto to, to Woodmills. Dr. Flores just mentioned, you know, thank you Cajon and Pacific. I was actually really impressed with, you know, your presentation and with what you're doing at your campuses to support students, parents, and teachers alike during these very challenging times. I also want to take a moment and say congratulations to Sanji for finishing in the top 10 for the county schools academic decathlon. So congratulations to you. Also, I want to thank the community for coming out and submitting, you know, your public comments. They're definitely not falling on deaf ears. I assure you that. Thank you for coming out and sharing what matters to you with us. On that note, I would like to ask Dr. Volcomer to, you know, please follow up with Delvia, her staff and teachers once again. And then please invite me to attend some of these meetings, please. Also, I'm very excited about the Bring Back Our Students event. And I'm going to, you know, make, try to make some time. So Karen, if you can, please sign me up for that. I'd really appreciate that. And lastly, I know that last Board meeting, we were presented on attendance for middle school students. I specifically remember asking about our special education population during that presentation. I just had a follow-up question that I, you know, kind of came later. We had concluded the meeting, but I'm wondering, are we holding amendment IEPs for our special education population? Specifically, are we holding amendment IEPs for students with attendance issues? In other words, are IEP goals being written for attendance, especially if those absences lead to lack of progress for those students? And with that, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Board, I, we're not at our Board comments yet because I, I am going to. So sorry about that, Ms. Sevaios. I don't know if we got off track. But, because we're going to have to let the principals go because I'm sure they have a Zoom waiting near them. And so I do, Dr. Wyatt, are you gonna, are you going to speak to the presentation and then I'll move forward? Okay.
Thank you, Madam President and Dr. Raimundo and definitely, you know, I mean, Ms. Bishop, your guys' presentations are absolutely phenomenal and wow. All I can say is tremendous amount of work put into those plans. So, so thank you. Thank you for that. And as you know, we, we've had a lot of concerns for our students at all grade levels, especially our kids in high school who are getting ready to graduate. And a couple of items that were brought up, and I was trying to listen to as much as I could. And like, I hope we could get that video, those videos too, and get to watch them again just to, to absorb more of what's happening for our students at your schools and all across our schools. But one, one plan that was brought up, I believe, was Saturday School. And if parents were interested in their, their children attending Saturday School, I know some were contacted, but what would we do if parents were reaching out and say, I'd like my son or daughter to go to Saturday School right now? And then I know I'm, I'm really excited about our ASAP, our Accelerated Student Achievement Plan. I know that's a bigger conversation for extended school years. So I'll, I'll reserve that to when we get to talk about AB 104 more. But right now, since Saturday School's happening, how would parents sign their kids up for that, if they can?
Or Pacific, it's, parents just need to call us. If they give us a call on our school number, occasionally you have to leave a voicemail, but parents, we will return your call. Students are notified about the Saturday Schools through Remind and social media as well as parents. So if somehow they're missing those, those Remind messages, they can just give us a call.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Raimundo. And I know sometimes kids might be getting those messages, but we want to make sure parents get those messages because we'll probably be the ones telling them they need to go. So, thank you. How about Ms. Bishop?
I, I'm going to say ditto. Cajon has a very, has the same process, but they can also, you can also reach out to your individual counselors and the counselors can make sure that they get signed up.
All right. Thank you, ladies both. And again, thank you to your staff and thank you to our students for just an amazing presentation from both schools. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And so just lastly, I'll say to you both again, Principal Raimundo and Principal Bishop, great job. Who would have thought, you know, many, many months ago, all the things that happened in person was now reflected in your presentation, not missing a beat on FAPSA and, and, and all of the decathlon. All this stuff is happening in this environment. And again, I just can't thank you all enough because as that parent said it so well, you know, the fears were always there, but here we are in still making sure that things happen and, and just all the fact that as Dr. Rodriguez is saying, go back and get a thousand and bring them back. You know, we haven't given up. We haven't stopped. We're refining it and getting better. And it's because of you all putting in the work. So thank you again. I know you, you know, this was one more Zoom of the day, but we appreciate you guys. We don't see you as much. So when we do see you, we definitely want to just, just give you our sincere thanks for just continuing to move forward and doing what is best for our students and our parents. So we appreciate you all. Thank you and have a great night. I didn't say that to you all, Board. We're, we're still going. Okay, we are now moving into 10.1 Board Member Comments. So Board members, I'm watching the chat. So if you, you have some comments or would like to make a comment, keeping in mind, we will be going back in closed session, rain, sleet, or snow. All right, I see, Dr. Flo, wait, wait, I think, wait. Ms. Sevaios, is that, that's like an I, I think. Yes?
No.
Did you click something in there or no?
I, I said I would like to, but.
Okay. And then, and then Dr. Wyatt, did you comment after, after your other comment you were in there first?
I need to comment again. That was.
Okay, I see you comment, comment. Okay, go ahead and then.
Yeah, that, that was comment squared on that one.
Okay, okay, I see you.
And you know, I've been pretty quiet all night and you know me, I'm going to get my five minutes right now.
Okay, please take them. Let's, let's put time right.
I don't see Mr. Tillman, so I might take his five minutes too. No, I'm just kidding. No, just again, wow, what an evening tonight, folks. A lot of information. And, you know, I know it's easy to get excited. Sometimes we, we see the numbers going down and it's like, oh, boy, are we, are we going to get to come back? And I think I've heard a lot of great comments from my colleagues here tonight about, you know, just safety, safety and safety. You know, that, that has to still remain number one for all of us. Of all people, I was super excited to see our kids get to come back and start training again and just getting out there and getting some fresh air on the field and being with their friends and their colleagues. And I know how wonderful of an experience that is. So thank you again to everyone for making that happen and definitely for keeping safe. And I've already sent out some shout-outs to folks to say, you know, thank you for keeping it safe for our kids and our staff because that has to be first and foremost. But of course, we're, I'm just super excited for them to get to, get back out there and on the field and just again, great presentations today across the Board. Really, really good stuff. And I, I can't compliment you enough on how much work you're putting in to do everything we can to help our kids succeed right now. I mean, I think it seems easy sometimes just to say, oh, we need to do something different. We need to do this or that. But gosh, the, the level of detail and thought that's being put in these plans is, is just absolutely amazing. And you see it in these presentations and you really see it when the kids are speaking. And so it's great when we have student testimonials that are, are there on video. Operation Student Recovery, super excited about that. And gosh, I always wish I could go do that one of these days. I haven't been able to do it yet because it's always during the work time for me. But I really do appreciate everybody that's getting out there and, you know, checking our kids, number one, you know, doing those wellness checks and making sure that they're okay. You know, a thousand students, that's a lot of kids. So I, you know, I'm really happy that we're getting out there to make sure that they and their families are okay as well. These are tough times. And so we just got to make sure our kids are, are well. And if they are great, let's get them to school. If they're not, let's get them the services they need to help them get to school. Ms. Savios beat me a little bit to it, but great job, San G. You know, I love the Academic Decathlon and I love mock trial. I love all these academic competitions. So it's just great seeing all of our high schools there, first of all, competing there at the Academic Decathlon. That's a heck of an event. If you've never seen it, you need to go check it out sometime and just an amazing celebration. So honestly, I think that's actually it for me, not as much as I was gonna say. And I still have like two minutes and 40 seconds. So I'm just kidding, but I, I will make sure to cut it short and thank you again to everyone and let's stay safe. There's light at the end of the tunnel, but we're going to keep that first and foremost. And just getting super excited to getting towards the end of this year and getting ready for a lot of celebrations of a lot of hard work from our students, staff and our family. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Ms. Savios?
So I apologize. I didn't realize that we weren't at board comment yet. I just want to go back and, did, did, do I need to repeat any of it?
Ginger is on the line, right? Were you capturing those things? Let me see. I believe.
Yes, I am capturing, capturing the questions as they come up.
Whenever you do make, you know, you do comment on something, she still will capture it in and out of turn.
And I forgot to mention, I was going to say Ms. Bishop was actually my, my science teacher back at King Middle School a while back. So it's nice to see her. But that was it. I just needed to know if I needed to repeat anything.
No, no, you're good. Okay, then I believe Dr. Flores?
Okay, get ready, Ginger. Could you put my time back for five minutes? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam President and Vice President Wyatt. So the first one I would like to ask that we get an update on our contractors' progress fulfilling their contractual commitments, especially from student services and ed services. It's mid-year. So I know that you monitor them and nothing extensive, but just, you know, how are they doing? Are, you know, are they reaching our parents? Are they reaching our students? What kind of work are they doing, et cetera? And then also for ed services, you know, highlight some of the salient services that we're providing for our teachers. I would also like an update on, on Footsteps to Brilliance. I would like an update on their district implementation and any progress reports that they have generated as well. And it would be nice for the board to, to have a 10-minute presentation on that, maybe 10, 15-minute. Later on, Madam President, to agendize it if we could. I would like to find out where we're at in terms of, or the state is. I've, I've read that a lot of states are requesting that we waive the standardized test, the annual standardized test. And I wonder where our, our state is on that. Could you please update the board on that? Also, when, when will the Director for Multilingual Education be filled? For our multilingual program? I'm, I'm just curious of that. Ms. Applegate, I think you've been gone for a couple of months, maybe three months. I'm not quite sure. So I just would like an update on that. I also saw, oh, another one is, you presented the comparison of the English and the math scores quarterly in first semester. I would like to see, and you probably have it already. I don't recall it. Compare first semester last year with first semester this year. The, the, the scores. I'd like to see that. And also I saw on EdJoin, this is the last one, on EdJoin that we're flying four management positions for IT. So I would like to know why and what's the cost and what, what, what will they be doing? Because that's a lot of positions. And so I'm curious about that. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say ditto to all for the great celebrations. And I won't repeat them because you've heard them already. We're proud of you. I want to thank the academic achievement team for the wonderful presentation. I, I'm, I'm just so thrilled at the work you are doing. I just want to share some things that I have done since the, our last meeting. I did attend the gangs and drugs, kind of like gangs and drugs task force. And would like to commend our own vice chair, Dr. Wyatt, and our president, Gwen Rogers, for being the leaders of that group. They're doing a magnificent job. So if you're available the first Wednesday, you'll be tuned in because there's some big things going on. Had a chance to go to Sierra, not go to, but have a virtual class setting along with Ms. Rogers at Sierra High School. We did two classes and had lots of fun talking about civil rights issues and shared with students to the point that I think some were really sad and some were really laughing, but it was good sessions. And I was also the keynote speaker for Cal State's Black History Kickoff, and I enjoy that. Again, Board President Rogers and I was on the School to Home, the School to Home Emerge Program. We thought we were going as guests, so we both ended up being speakers, which was a surprise to us. Heard a lot of district chairs and things. I was proud to see the, all, all the people there from our district. And I did give a shout-out to them. So I want to say to the district people at the School to Home, so glad to see you and so glad you were there and hope you got a lot of good information. I want to, I attended the Student Advisory Program and they were honored to have Mr., oh my gosh, Minnesota Vikings.
Madison, Alex.
Madison, Alex Madison there as a speaker. And that, that was great. I also tuned in to the District African Advisory Council Meeting. Dr. Greer did a big job of having people there talking about social emotion and other types of non-educational, but a very important part of what our parents and students need to hear. And I want you to know, for those of you who do not like live streaming, and I want who do not. And I woke up last Saturday morning, kind of early. I don't know if it was seven o'clock or eight o'clock and I have Spectrum. And there we were on Channel 3. So we are still coming on the local access station. You can always fall down and find out when they're coming, when the show is going to be on. So you can watch it on TV with your feet prop up at home. And with that, and with our wonderful staff, with our cabinet and our leadership under Dr. Volkamore, continue doing a good job. Appreciate all the work you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Tillman?
Thank you very much. And just, I, I know, I heard Dr. Flores asked questions about the IT positions. Ms. Christakis, how many total IT positions do we have? Do you know off the top of your hand?
I think it's 45. I can look it up really quick. 45, I think.
I, I think it's something like 45. But let me say this, you know, we had the issue a while back when we had the ransomware issue. The one thing that was obvious on Dr. Flores is we don't have nearly enough IT staff. And I'll give you a good comparison. And where I work at the county, I support about 5,000 users. And I have 100 people that work for me doing nothing but IT to support those people. So in our district, you're talking about having staff of about 7,000 and another 50,000 students that we give all devices to. So to have 45 people support all that technology, I don't know how they do it. So.
No, my question was about management. I mean, I'm not opposed to IT staff.
Exactly. And they need high-level IT people working there. And for instance, management and IT is, you're going to hire somebody who's doing your networking or your operations. But they're going to be with that, that actually know the work, can do the work and going to direct the people. And that's what we really need.
My question was why and what are they going to do and.
Right.
I'm just questioning that.
I can guarantee it's needed. We need many, many more IT people. It's just, the, the district is way too lean. And that's the one thing I found out when I went into the meetings. When you, when, when we had just a couple of people doing backups, people having to work overtime. And then when you have an issue occur, like we did, we had to do all the restores, it was almost impossible. So I gotta, I gotta say, we need, I, I had asked that we almost doubled the staff. And I think Ms. Christakis ended up saying she could find money for another 10 positions. Ms. Christakis, how many positions did you actually end up adding?
So we didn't add any. We budgeted for about that. But as soon as we had that meeting, you know, COVID hit and new job descriptions had to be written. And so these are just four positions that Dr. Flores is referring to, but they shouldn't be flying that hasn't, hasn't been finalized yet.
They were on EdJoin on Friday.
Okay.
And also, also, I thought we had a moratorium on hiring or, I mean, I thought that that's what we were doing during COVID. I mean, I'm not opposed to Mr. Tillman, you know, on the need. I mean, I, I'm right there with you because we do need more people. But I'm also wondering about management in other areas, you know, like the, 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 these, these are new positions. And the, the Director of Multilingual is not a new position. It's vacant.
So let me, and I will get information on that. Defense Mike comments on the, I, I hope that we look at doing a, for lack of a better term, a vaccination plan. So number one, if there's any opportunity, Dr. Volkamore, where we can partner with whoever giving out the vaccines and, and we can be the folks that say, hey, you know, we want to work with you and set up sites where we can help dispense the vaccines. I think that's critical. I think that once our, our employees start getting vaccinated, then have a plan on how we can come back to the sites and support as many students, in, of course, in a socially distant way. But once a staff started getting vaccinated and the, the vaccines are still working because, you know, there's, what I've read, even with the B117, the vaccines that we have do work. And people don't get, you may, you may get the COVID-19, but you don't get real sick and you don't go to the hospital. So getting those vaccines is a big deal. There's a lot of confusion right now. I mean, when Biden said we're going to open in 100 days, 100 days takes us to April or May. So why would there be a rush to open if you, if, if folks are able to get vaccinated? So I don't know why people are making these statements, but logically, it doesn't make sense to me. Where if we're this close to getting a vaccine, then I think it's better for us to get, the plan to be to help as many folks who, who are willing to get vaccinated, get vaccinated and then make plans for those folks to come back on campus to help the students that we know need the help, help the most. That to me should be the, the plan for us. So I hope we don't get sidetracked by all these other things going on and make that a priority. And I hope the board agrees with that, that our goal should be trying to get as many people vaccinated as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman.
Mr. Rogers, if I, if I may just add real quick about the Personnel Commission, the positions for IT. I would just like to add, I know the Personnel Commission was just recruiting in preparation for any positions that may be deemed essential or if approved later on, if we go down that road. So that recruitment, from my understanding, is just for preparation at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that, Dr. Funches. And I know Ms. Rosales Medina is having some computer glitches. So I'll, I'll make the final comments too. Ditto to everything. Everyone said I want to repeat a whole lot of stuff. But Dr. Hill, I did want to add to the list of all the places that I kept bumping into you via Zoom, that I did make the D-LAC meeting as well, and I bumped it to Dr. Flores at that one. But I did do that. And then we were on the town hall, which was a great town hall for our vaccination. We had tons of people that were on the Zoom as well as, as watching. And I'm sure Dr. Volkamore would share out, but that was very important. And then one other, I think I just want to encourage people, especially right now, when we talk about brain breaks and, and just getting some time away. The Symphony is still going and they're doing a wonderful job virtually. You know, I have gotten a chance to see about three of, three different ones. And they had one, of course, during Valentine's and they did a great, great job. So whenever you see the Symphony is having something, you know, support them. They're still doing the work. And that, that is just, you know, just stellar and something that we need. And then lastly, two things I want to again remind, so Dr. Volkamore, I want to make sure that we are clear on whatever we need to do, whether it's talking with the policy committee, working towards saying, yes, we do want to look at those graduation rates. That is, that is, that is important. So it's clear. I heard him talk about it again, but we've already said, yes, move forward with that. So hopefully everybody's clear. And then lastly, in, in addition to what you said, Mr. Tillman, I had an opportunity to speak with the Board of Supervisors, actually our representative, and I've also spoken to Ms. Betis Alakala as well on clarity around our teachers and the, and the county seeming to think that we, we, you know, we're not opening, but yet our teachers still need to be prioritized. So I've spoken to them and we are going to draft a letter so that they can put us in the right position for our teachers because it still will be a delay time. There's, right now, we're operating with this two-shot thing. And so, you know, we're all clear on that. And I talked to Dr. Volkamore, but I do want to bring that to the board's attention, that there's going to be a letter drafted so that they know that clearly with us not being open has nothing to do with not wanting our teachers prioritized. Because our teachers have made it very clear, they, they here in San Bernardino, not driving here, driving there. There's so many theories on how to get a shot. It's just absolutely ridiculous. But I do serve on a vaccination committee. And matter of fact, we were updated again today with Department of Behavior Health that after March, there's going to be a big shift, again, kind of alluding to what you were saying, Dr. Flores, about who's going to be administering it. So right now, you know, the county has some input and will continue to. But I want to make it very clear that we want to prioritize our teachers. And so that we're all on the same page that you know, what my request is, is to Dr. Volkamore and to the Union President to get together, to let them know that we're all on one accord, wanting that and not to penalize us because we're not opening at this time. Yes, yes. Teachers are classified.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. And our police and our, all, all our unions, yeah.
So they will draft.
I support that. Thank you.
And we're just, we're just grateful to have, you know, Joe Baca, someone we can reach out to that's supportive. And it's, you know, it's time to speak to them. So want to let you know that. And then lastly, Dr. Volkamore, I did mention a while back about we, we, I spoke to Assemblymember Reyes about the broadband and we do need some kind of documentation to put in her hands about the importance of how many people we're serving and why we're serving it and why they need to push for us to have that support for equity throughout our city. So I, I know you're, you're going to be working, I know the priority on one, and I spoke to the other one. But I want to make that clear that those are two reach outs that is very important that we need to push forward on. So we're at the forefront of that. Okay, and that is it for me. And we will now move, and Dr. Volkamore, you'll probably add to what I just said, but 10.1 what I just said, but 10.2, Superintendent and Staff.
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, just a, just a couple updates. There's, there's always a ton going on in the district. I do want to give a shout-out to everyone who helped organize our Town Hall meeting. Last week, it was a very successful event. Our partners from Loma Linda were outstanding in terms of the information they brought, the questions they asked. We had several hundred, I think we had upwards of six hundred that registered to be part of the Town Hall meeting. Don't know exactly how many came through, I think it was about four hundred or so, but very pleased with that turnout and very thankful for Loma Linda and their willingness to share information and be partners with us on that effort. In terms of vaccination, we, we hear you, we are working very hard. You may or may not know, I think I put it in the Daily Report last week, one day, Royal Valley High School is one of the officially-recognized vaccination sites for the county. We are hoping, and right now, they're vaccinating sixty-five and older, we're actually hoping, hoping that that will become a vaccination site for our district and our team members. We're also working very closely, obviously, with Loma Linda, as well as Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, and some other of our partners to help us move the vaccination plan forward, but we're very much in tune with, with your desires for that board. In terms of broadband, President Rogers, Janie and I just met, I think it was Friday, to finalize that, we're just putting a summary paragraph on all of the work that was done, and you should have that in the next day or two, to move forward with Assembly Member Gomez Reyes. So we're, we've got that pretty much done. Couple other things that are, that are coming up in the district are annual, 21st Annual UCAN Fair, which highlights opportunities that are historically black colleges and universities, will be occurring Thursday and Friday, Thursday and Friday, February 18th and 19th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and then, then again on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that's February 20th. That's all being done virtually, so please spread the word, we're spreading the word, getting as many kids as we can to go explore, learn, and you know, they, as, as we've heard and, and shared before, they offer scholarships right on the spot. So we want our kids to get those dollars, we want our kids to get into those college spots, so always a great time and a great event with our UCAN. You heard about OSR 1000, where, you know, we've, that's what we call a big, hairy, audacious goal, to get a thousand kids in one day, but, but Dr. Rodriguez has been providing the leadership in that area, and I'm very confident that we will be able to hit that target to make sure that we're re-engaging and connecting with our kids. That's again, February 23rd, 9:00 to 12:00. Two other announcements are Latino Task Force for Student Achievement will be this coming Monday, February 22nd, 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. That's an ongoing work that we have within the district, and then our next regularly-scheduled LCAP meeting is the very next night, February 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:00, and we want to, we want to get a great turnout for that in terms of community representation. So if you'd like to be a part of any of those events, Board, please let Karen know, and we'll make sure you get linked in. UCAN, February 18th, 19th, and 20th. Operation Student Recovery 1000, February 23rd. District Latino Task Force for Student Achievement, February 22nd, and our next LCAP meeting, February 23rd. And then I just want to conclude with two shout-outs. Student recognitions and staff recognitions. Royal Valley High School Hawk Battalion cadets did it again, with their leadership cadet team successfully receiving national recognition and qualifying for Round Two in the National Leadership and Academic JROTC Bowl. Out of 1,511 high school army JROTC schools that entered the competition, only thirty-two of fifteen, over 1,500 schools in the Western Region made it through to the second round. Want to congratulate Principal Bernardo Valenzuela, the coaches and students, Go Hawks, Go Hawks, good luck in Round Two. And then, as you've already heard, we want to congratulate our Spartans from San Gregorio High School, made a good showing in the top ten, placing eighth at the San Bernardino Academic Decathlon. So those are my comments for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 11.0 Consent Calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, are, is there anything to pull, going once, going twice? No? All right, well, I will take the vote. Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you. Moving on to, all right, 12.0 Action Items, 12.1 Personnel Report Number 13, dated February 16, 2021.
Board as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, if there's no discussion, Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. 12.2 Public Disclosure, Proposed SBTA Bargaining Agreement, Business Services.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, if there's no discussion, Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you. 12.3 Secondary World Language Textbook Adoption. Whew, three.
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Okay, Dr. Hill?
I do, no, I do, I do. I just wanted to clarify with, I just wanted to clarify to find out, within the, you know, we've had issues before where teachers didn't feel like they were authentically engaged with selecting the textbook, so I just wanted to find out who were involved in the process in the selection of these textbooks.
Mrs. Applegate will respond to that.
Yes, gladly. Yes, Board, you do have a B.C. on this as well, with all of the details, but Ms. Flores, Ms. Medina, we did have over thirty-four members. All of the world languages teachers at the secondary level were invited, and the majority of the members on the committee were teachers. We had Ms. Betis Alakala also give us representatives from SBTA, so it was a pretty diverse group, and we had maybe two program specialists from downtown. So we did have quite a large committee, and the materials were actually piloted as well by the teachers themselves. And so they piloted the materials, and then they also, they had a vote. And then in your B.C., you do have a list of all the materials that were voted on and adopted.
And then with regards to the materials that were sampled, because one of the complaints from the last time I spoke to a few teachers was that the, the company will traditionally showcase the highest programs and then the models that they're be testing, but in reality, that might be, that might not necessarily include all the programs they will be using once it's purchased, so it may be all these little extra stuff that they get to test out, and yet, when they get a program, it's not everything that they want, or, or was part of the program in itself. So I just wanted to make sure if they, the program that they tested is the one that we're actually getting. I don't know if that makes sense. They, like I said, the previous textbooks, they'll complain about.
Yes, and one, and, because there are different programs at different levels, but the ones that were piloted were some of the ones that were adopted, so they, they do have that. And they have digital licenses, there, there's a, in your B.C., you will see all the different materials that were purchased to go along.
I guess I was referring to all the extras that they got to test out. All of those extras are included within the package that they're, that they selected, but that's in this action item.
Let me, let me make sure, I can get the list of materials that were purchased for you. You have the names of the, of the materials and books, but I get all the ancillaries as well, everything that was purchased with the adoption.
Yeah, no, no, I just want, I guess, to just make sure that the items that the teachers were testing, the pilot that they were testing, is the same exact program that they're getting, because a lot of times, they'll test the pilot program, have all the bells and whistles, but once they purchase it, they don't get those extra items. And so that's, I mean, I, I know that there's all these different items, I just want to make sure that that's kind of clear to the teachers as well, when they're approving it, that, you know what, yes, we're going to get this program, but it may not include, you know, all these extra bells and whistles that you might have tested with. I don't know if that was the case with this, it might, might not necessarily be the case, but I know that it was the case in previous adoptions for textbooks, and so I just want to make sure that we are noting that as we purchase textbooks in the future as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. My, my question is, do we have, do we have to purchase the hard copy, or can we just get the digital? It can be updated, you know, history's in the making right now, and I would just hate to see us, you know, purchase textbooks that's not going to have history in it, that I know students who are living it, who want to read about it, who'll be interested in it. So is it possible we can purchase the digital copies and not the hard copies of the textbooks?
Dr. Hill, let me find out if that will not be a Williams issue, if they are allowing just digital copies of books, and I will get that information to you.
Thank you.
All right, Board, is there any other discussion? All right, if not, we will take the vote. Ms. Abios?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye, with reservations.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers, aye, motion carry. Thank you. All right, 13.0 Summary of Board Members' Requests. Ginger, you're on, Ms. Altaveros.
Right, well, good evening, Board. I did capture quite a few questions, but I will say that quite a few were answered. So during the presentation on athletics, there were several questions asked about what other leagues, what other districts were doing, what kind of safety precautions were available, what kinds of supports or access we were giving to students for their physicals. All of those were answered by various members of the team, asked about whether it would be voluntary, that too was answered, and Ms. Abios asked about whether the, this would open the door also for in-person special education assessments, with which Dr. Minara has answered was included in the MOU with SBTA that you approved this evening. Mr. Tillman asked about how long the cross-country season would last, which led to a conversation where the Board offered a consensus in the direction that would allow competitions to occur when they were safe to do so based on meeting the state's standards. Dr. Margaret Hill asked about whether students would be wearing masks, that too was answered. Then there was a, we shifted topics, and so now, Dr. Flores asked about the recruitment flyer and whether that could be translated for parents so that they could review the information and see that their voice from last year was included in the recruitment process. Dr. Flores asked several questions about the access to the community for submitting questions for the Board to consider, and asked if that could be extended. Dr. Flores did ask in the chat which, which social media platforms it was posted on, and the answer to that was Facebook and Instagram. Dr. Flores asked about information about the testing and the positivity rates for children in our district and our city, for, she then also asked about the number of COVID-19 deaths that happened in our district and city. Ms. Myra Abios asked about follow-up with the staff at Del Vallejo, and specifically wants to be invited to attend a meeting with them. Ms. Abios asked if we were holding amendments to our IEPs to include attendance goals for special education students. I think I captured that one right. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked a question that was answered about Saturday school. Dr. Flores then asked about, asked to receive an update about the contractors for student services and ed services, and how they're doing in fulfilling their services, highlighting especially supports for teachers. Dr. Flores asked for an update on Footsteps to Brilliance and requested that a presentation be made. Dr. Flores asked for an update on whether the state was considering waiving standardized Dr. Flores also asked for an update on filling the position of the Director of Multilingual Programs, and asked for us to compare grades from last year's first semester to this year's first semester. Dr. Flores also asked for information about the four management positions in the IT department, and what specifically their roles will be. Mr. Tillman requests...
And the cost.
And the cost, okay. Mr. Tillman requested that the district provide or develop a vaccination plan in partnership with local providers. Ms. Gwen Rogers asked if we would work with our unions to advocate that vaccines be prioritized for school staff, and also to provide documentation to state legislatures, to the state legislature in order to advocate for improved access to broadband for our community. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked about the textbook adoption. Some of her questions were answered, but ultimately, she wanted to make sure that we were including all the extra supports that come along with textbooks, or at least those that the teachers expect. And then, Dr. Margaret Hill asked if we could purchase them in digital versions instead of hard copies.
Can I clarify really quickly? So I think it was more or less, so any type, any type in the future, any type of textbook adoption, we have to really understand or look at what the program or the company is including with all the bells and whistles, and, and not that we're going to provide those resources to our teachers, but, you know, that way, when they, when they're looking and comparing programs or textbooks, they are getting exactly what we're going to, at the end, going to get, not the bells and whistles, and at the end, we don't get none of those. Like, I just want to make sure, it's not that we would give them extra resources, just being clear of what we're purchasing and what they know it's not included or included within the program.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And those were all the requests.
All right, Board, looks like we covered everything, and if we have, then we'll go ahead and move to 14.1, we'll be adjourning this meeting, but we will not be reporting out. So we want to say to our viewing audience, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here with us tonight with our board meeting, and again, we want to say to you, thank you, stay safe, and good night, and God bless, and we will see the rest of you on the other side, so log out and log in. Bye, thank you, everybody.
Okay, good night.